Well. Call this budget workshop to order. Today is Thursday, June 26th. The time is 5:32. Ms. Trevino, let's see who's here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Saul Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
And Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez. We have a quorum present.
Alrighty, citizen comment time period. Okay. City Council does hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. There is a sign up process. I'm going to ask those of you in the audience if you could take your conversation into the lobby, please. There is a process to sign up. You may speak once during the time period, may not yield time to others. You have three minutes to speak when you state your name. Timer is displayed on the screen. You'll start in the green. When you get to the yellow, think about wrapping it up because you've got less than 20 seconds left. And when the timer is red, your time to speak is up and we hope a bell will ring. Mayor and council endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. We have one person signed up, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there to be in person. Beans Yumpa is the first, last, and only speaker. Are they here? I wonder if they're thinking six o'clock. Okay.
It's at 5:30.
I know, it's at 5:30. Okay, but they might be thinking six. All right, tell you what, we're going to move on with our presentation, the one and only presentation tonight. Ms. Trevino, would you read item one, please?
Yes, ma'am. Receive a staff presentation, hold discussion regarding the fiscal year 2024-2025 financial update and preliminary fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, and provide direction to the city manager.
Ms. Reyes.
Tonight's budget workshop is a crucial opportunity. It allows us to transparently share our city's current financial position, actively solicit your input, and collectively guide how we align our resources with our strategic priorities. The budget decisions we bring forward tonight are a pivotal step in shaping our city's financial future. These decisions are not arbitrary. They are guided by our strategic goals, which serve as our compass, ensuring our financial choices reflect the values and vision of San Marcos. This budget is a testament to a collaborative effort crafted through council direction, staff expertise, and public input. Over the past year, we've intentionally amplified our engagement with the community regarding the budget process. This included hosting public meetings, dream sessions, engaging with the Neighborhood Commission, and leveraging our online engagement tool, which garnered nearly 400 responses. Our commitment to transparency and continued engagement remains strong. We have more opportunities ahead, including upcoming Neighborhood Commission meetings and multiple public hearings, all before the final budget is adopted in September. Furthermore, we are actively applying the lessons learned this year to enhance and refine our engagement efforts for next year's budget process. Our people are at the heart of everything we do. We are deeply committed to being an employer of choice. This commitment translates directly into our ability to attract and retain top talent who tirelessly serve our community every single day. Our compensation philosophy, which was adopted by council in December 2023, is designed to support this goal by providing competitive pay, robust benefits, and clear pathways for career progression. The positive impact of these investments is evident. Our 2024 employee engagement survey revealed that 80% of our staff reported their benefits encouraged them to stay, a significant increase from 64% in 2022. Concurrently, our vacancy rate has dropped from 15% in 2022 to just 6% as of June. These metrics indicate that investments in our staff are working. However, we understand it is imperative to stay ahead of inflation and navigate a highly competitive job market to avoid losing the ground we've gained. This isn't just about fairness to our dedicated staff. It directly impacts the quality and consistency of the services you depend upon daily, from reliable utilities and well-maintained parks to efficient city operations. Furthermore, our commitment to competitive compensation sets a vital standard for companies considering locating in San Marcos, demonstrating the types of jobs and benefits we aspire for them to provide to our workforce and community members. To continue this positive momentum, we are also actively exploring targeted professional development programs and enhance employee benefits to further strengthen our position as an employer of choice. A significant portion of our discussion this evening will focus on the general fund. That's the backbone of our city operations, funding essential services from our libraries and roads to police, fire, emergency services, and parks. This year presents an especially difficult reality. Demands on our services are significantly outpacing our available resources. Our two largest revenue sources, sales tax and property tax, are simply not keeping pace with expenses. In fact, our 2026 sales tax revenues are estimated to be less than what we collected in FY 2023. Furthermore, property tax revenue at the current rate of 60.30 is projected to decrease by 1.8 million, directly linked to a decline in overall property values. What this means is that without a tax rate adjustment to at least the estimated structurally balanced rate of 64.03 cents, we will face a required budget reduction of $3.1 million. This would directly impact our ability to maintain current service levels. We are not the only city facing this scenario, and a quick look at the headlines shows that communities across the state are facing shortfalls that must be addressed. We will discuss various tax rate scenarios, including the no new revenue rate. Our analysis shows that this rate should result in the same amount of property tax paid by homeowners due to the overall decline of property values in our community. This is important when considering new programs like the Office of Community Support and Resources, which aims to focus on underlying factors contributing to crime, such as poverty, lack of education, and limited access to mental health services, additional funding for the Human Services Advisory Board, and continuing services like the agreement with the Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid once federal funding ends. These choices are about long-term financial stability, preserving our quality of life, and reinvesting dollars back into our community. Considering a tax rate increase also helps safeguard our financial position in future years. We must consider the effects of potential legislation impacting city revenues and expenses as there were efforts this past state legislative session to implement expenditure caps and restrictive rules for issuing debt for city projects. Recent legislative sessions have shown that property tax is likely to be more constrained in the future. We are taking steps to address this instability by taking a closer look at our fleet, staffing levels, and implementing a sales tax contingency fund to offset volatile declines in sales tax revenues. Finally, we'll review our other major operating funds, including hotel tax, stormwater, resource recovery, airport, and transit, highlighting their revenue estimates, cost drivers, and proposed changes. We'll be seeking your direction on utility late penalties. Our peer review found that nine out of 13 surveyed cities have a late penalty of 10% similar to San Marcos. We understand council's interest in potentially adjusting this structure and will present options for your consideration, including flat fees, percentage penalties, or a percentage with a maximum cap. We also want to highlight that our current system capabilities means we cannot split penalties between residential and commercial accounts, meaning that small and large commercial accounts would be treated the same under a unified structure. This workshop is a vital opportunity for open dialogue and collective decision-making. We are committed to a transparent, inclusive process. Following tonight's discussion, staff will incorporate your direction and submit the proposed budget to council on August 19th. We will also have more opportunities for community input through public hearings in September. Before closing, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Finance Director John Locke, Tricia Potek, the budget team, and the entire finance department for closely monitoring our funds, navigating a very dynamic economy, providing timely advice and updates, and putting together all of this information. I also want to extend thanks to all employees, specifically our amazing directors team, who joins us here this evening, and also our assistant directors, who made difficult departmental trade-offs while staying focused on community needs. We look forward to council questions and a productive conversation as we work together to shape our budget that serves the needs of our San Marcos community now and into the future. And before I turn it over to Mr. Locke, I would like to recognize and introduce Natalie McAdams. She's in the audience. Natalie is our new library director, who joined us on June 2nd. Natalie brings a wealth of experience from her previous role as Director of the Temple Public Library System. We're thrilled to have her on our team and look forward to the library continuing to thrive under her leadership. Welcome, Natalie. Without further ado, I will now turn it over to Mr. Locke to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes, and thank you, Mayor and City Council. We'll begin by looking at the agenda for this evening. And we start with going over the general budget process and the community engagement that has taken place to date. We'll look at recruiting and retaining and our efforts to make sure that we're attracting top talent. We'll begin by going over the general fund, including council priorities, looking at the revenues and expenses within the general fund, looking at the forecast and how the different tax scenarios impact the forecast. We'll also present recommendations for how to use the fund balance in excess of the city's fund balance policy. And then there are some decision points for City Council to provide additional guidance to staff in building the fiscal year 26 budget. After that, we'll go over all other major operating funds and include similar information with revenue estimates, cost drivers, and new requests, utility late penalty discussion, and there's some decision points on those funds as well. So we'll begin by just going over the fiscal year 26 budget calendar. You can see we're at the last budget workshop prior to the fiscal year 26 proposed budget being submitted to City Council. That is this evening, June 26th. That budget will be presented to City Council on August 19th. And on that same meeting, or at that same meeting, City Council will set the maximum tax rate. That just establishes a ceiling. So if City Council sets that tax rate at 65 cents, City Council can adopt a tax rate less than 65 cents, just not any higher than 65 cents. A big day is July 25th. That's when we'll receive our certified role. So the tax rates that we're going to show this evening and that we have been talking about for the past couple of months are just estimates. Staff does not have all the necessary information to calculate the tax rate. So when we come back on the 19th, those will be the actual no new revenue tax rates and the voter approval tax rates, which will look a little different than what we're showing this evening, that these are just estimates, but it's the same concept. So it just gives you an idea about what that no new revenue rate is going to look like. We also just wanted to bring to your attention that it's in staff's, it is staff's intention to submit a budget in August that reflects City Council's direction and priorities. And with this being the last budget workshop prior to that budget being submitted, your guidance and direction is appreciated this evening so we can make sure that we're presenting the budget in August that reflects your priorities. After the budget is delivered to council on the 19th, the following day, we'll have another meeting with the Neighborhood Commission, and that's just to give them an update of what the budget looks like. And then there'll be four public hearings prior to the budget adoption and the tax rate being set. City Council's strategic goals play a large role in building the annual budget. Every expenditure or expense within the fiscal year 26 budget should point back to one of these five goals in some way, in support of the goal. The budget is, like we just touched on, informed by City Council's strategic plan goals. We're also considering strategies to support being an employer of choice. We're continuing to reevaluate recruitment and retention strategies and implementing the employee compensation philosophy, and this is through employee benefits and developing merit and career progression plans, and increased personnel to adequately support core services where needed. Already touched on it once, and I think it's important just to say it again, that it is staff's intention to submit a budget in August that reflects council's direction and priorities. So this is the last workshop prior to us submitting that budget. To date, the community engagement has been provided through dream sessions, through the Neighborhood Commission meetings, and through the online community engagement platform. Through that online community engagement platform, the City Council's strategic goals were ranked and prioritized. And we also received some feedback on some of the supplemental requests that the departments requested throughout the budget process. So we're able to use this feedback, was shared with all of the departments, and it was a factor that was considered during the budget-making process. Future community engagement opportunities include that Neighborhood Commission meeting that's still remaining after we submit that proposed budget, as well as a minimum of four public hearings, two on the tax rate, two on the budget, and any kind of proposed fee changes will have a public hearing as well. Now we'll talk in a little more detail on recruiting and retaining top talent. The compensation philosophy formalizes the city's commitment to attracting, engaging, and rewarding a diverse and multi-generational workforce. It provides the foundation for the retention and recruitment of employees through a sustainable compensation classification plan and communicating our workplace culture and core values. It supports the city's goal of becoming an employer of choice. This is the current compensation philosophy. I'll just read it aloud. It's the city of San Marcos is committed to attracting, engaging, and rewarding a diverse and multi-generational workforce by offering career progression opportunities in a total rewards package, including competitive compensation and benefits in a purposeful work life. The city will regularly survey the marketplace to ensure we are an employer of excellence, focused on serving our community and accomplishing our core values of integrity, teamwork, professionalism, customer experience, and innovation. The compensation philosophy is also informed by the employee surveys that we've conducted. When you look at the same survey questions that was conducted originally in '22 and compared to the responses in 2024, you can see a marked improvement in all of these questions. These questions reflect the percentages where the employee responded with agree or strongly agree. So just to point out a couple, the first, the benefits I've received encourage me to stay with the organization. You see, that increased from 64% in 2022 to 80% in 2024. And that's really important because it's showing a reduction in turnover, and we're seeing that in our turnover numbers. There's less turnover. Turnover is costly to the city. It costs a lot of money to retrain individual employees to provide those services, and it also impacts service delivery too, to residents. Just a couple other to point out, the compensation I receive motivates me to perform at higher levels. That increased from 33% to 60%, as well as my salary reflects my responsibilities. You'll see the last bullet on the slide is that the next survey will be done next year in 2026. The city also compares our salary and other benefits to our peer cities. Our peer cities consist of both local and regional cities that are within our recruitment area and other like-type cities outside of the immediate area. These were originally selected in 2023 by the directors team, and they were chosen based on a comparable size or demographics, a university community, if they have municipally-owned water, wastewater, and electric, or airports, and if we compete with them for recruitment. This is a list of some responses that we've seen on what increases our peer cities are planning for fiscal year 26. As you can see, just going through the chart, that the first list that there is Austin, and they're planning to do a 3.5% to 4% COLA adjustment and no merit pay. Some cities, like the city of Bryan, Bryan's proposing a 2% COLA adjustment and a merit pay that'll average out to be in 4%. And since we submitted this list, we did receive two other responses. The city of Cedar Park said they're in the process of a market study, so they're not planning any increases at this time. And the city of Sugar Land said that they're going to do a 3% merit pool where employees will be awarded anywhere between 0 and 5%. Overall, though, it would be a 3% increase. This slide shows the impact of inflation on employee salary. It begins with the average salary as of 2021, and that was $57,000. And if you follow the darker color, that is that employee's salary each year when there was a cost of living adjustment applied to their salary. The lighter color, the green color, is what we have labeled as an inflation target. And that is how much that employee would have needed to have made to have kept up with inflation that particular year. So it's easier to see if you look at the chart on the right-hand side. So for an example, in fiscal year 2022, there was a 4% COLA. That particular year, the CPI was just over 6%. So that employee lost about $1,200 of buying power. And as you follow that employee through, over the years, it peaks at $3,000. And as you can see, we've gained some ground the last three years. With the proposed 3% in 2026, it's down to $1,600. This is also important because we need to stay competitive to achieve the city's employee compensation philosophy and to not lose ground to our competitors, the people we compete with to attract and retain employees. Staying competitive helps the city attract and retain the talented workforce, and it also allows us to do incremental versus large increases. This slide shows the employee vacancy rate over a period of time. On the left-hand side, it's just a graphical representation of each one of the employee groups. And it's really just intended to show, in general, they're all trending downward. If you look at the right-hand side, where the table of numbers are, the citywide vacancy rate peaked in fiscal year 2022 at 15%. And as Ms. Reyes pointed out in the opening remarks, that is now at 6%. So it's showing that we're losing less employees due to turnover. For the non-civil service employees, they also peaked in '22 at 19%, and that is down to 7%. And if you look at the civil service employees, they actually peaked at 7% in '21, and that is down to 2%. And you can also see for police and fire individually how they stand throughout that time. So it's just another example of the positive impact that investing in employees is having. Now we're going to go into some more detail of just the general fund. Up to this point, we've really discussed things that impact all of the operating funds, and now we'll talk specifically about the general fund. Another point that was made by Ms. Reyes is that the demands or the cost of providing services to the residents are increasing significantly, and they're outpacing our resources. The two largest revenue sources in the general fund are property tax and sales tax, and they make up about 2/3 of the total revenues in the general fund. For fiscal year '26, the sales tax revenues are estimated to be less than the actual sales tax revenues the city received in fiscal year 2023. And with the current tax rate, the property tax revenue in fiscal year '26 will decrease by 1.8 million. I do want to point out one thing on this slide, that 1.8 million is now 1.4 million. We'll explain it in a little bit more detail in a slide that's coming up. And that is just due to the House Bill 9 not taking effect until January of '26. When we prepared this presentation, our understanding was that House Bill 9 was going to have an impact on fiscal year '26, and it's actually in fiscal year '27 that it'll have its impact. But we'll talk a little bit more about that when we look at the tax rate scenarios. We also have a decline in property tax revenues that is directly tied to a decline in property values. In fiscal year '25, there was enough new value added to the tax roll to compensate for the reduction in the overall taxable value. And actually, I should say that again because that wasn't too clear. So in fiscal year '25, the reappraised value went down as well during the current year. It went down. We just had enough new value added to the tax roll to compensate for that. In fiscal year '26, we don't have the same thing. So we have an overall value decrease of 3%. Without a tax rate increase to at least the estimated structurally balanced tax rate of about 64%, a budget cut of $3.1 million is required in order to have a structurally balanced budget. And that is a very large budget cut for the general fund. The general fund has, 72% of the general fund is personnel, it's people. It takes people to provide the types of services that the general fund provides when you think of police and fire, parks and recreation. There are, it takes people to provide those services. So it doesn't take long when you're cutting $3.1 million until you get to people. In terms of, for perspective on a budget, the animal shelters budget is $2 million, and the co-compliance budget is $1 million. So to cut $3.1 million, it would be the same, it's just completely eliminating those two programs or services from the budget. When overall property values decrease, a tax rate increase is required to bring in the same amount of revenue. And another way to look at that is when my home value decreases, a tax rate that increases commensurately with that, there is no change in the property tax that I pay because the tax rate is increasing to, in a commensurate amount, to my home's decrease in value. So that's, that is how you get at the no new revenue rate. The no new revenue rate generates the same amount of property tax revenue on properties taxed in both the current year, which is fiscal year '25, and next year in fiscal year '26. The no new revenue rate is required for any new programs and services, such as the Office of Community Support and Resources, and the increase to the HSAB funding. That is above the $50,000 mark. City Council did say in their policy that that needed to increase at least $50,000, so that is included in the current version of the budget, to continue programs such as tenants' rights after that federally funding ends, and to best position the city for long-term sustainability. This slide shows what we've heard from City Council so far during the budget process as it relates to the general fund. That is that the tax rate should be between the structurally balanced tax rate of sixty-four cents and the no new revenue tax rate, which is about sixty-five cents. To increase HSAB funding to seven hundred and fifty thousand and add a minimum in fiscal year twenty-six. That should be an increase of fifty thousand up to a maximum increase of two hundred thousand. There was a request for Office of Community Support and Resources that we have estimated to be able to stand up at about fifty thousand dollars. There's a lot more to it than just that, and there's a couple of slides that follow that explain a little bit more about what would go into creating the Office of Community Support and Resources. And then there's the the interest in tenants' rights. Currently, that's at seventy thousand dollars through an agreement with Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid. That is federally funded through an ARPA funds in fiscal year twenty-six. And it is included in the forecast for fiscal year twenty-seven and beyond. And the following slides are just showing how we're responding to the direction that city council has provided up to this point. Beginning with the Office of Community Support and Resources. It is included in city council's strategic plan under their community safety outcome. And the specific strategy reads that to partner with residents and key stakeholders to design and establish an office focusing on underlying factors contributing to crimes such as poverty, lack of education, and limited access to mental health services. Through a holistic approach, proactive solutions, community-driven initiatives, and adjusting staffing to support these initiatives effectively. So with that fifty thousand dollars. That budget amount for fiscal year twenty-six is anticipated to cover first some staffing adjustments. And that's reclassifying two existing positions. One is an analyst, one will perform an analyst role, and it's a former grant specialist position that's currently vacant. And a manager role, which will be filled by the formerly positioned formerly known as the Community Resource and Engagement Coordinator. That funding will also provide resources and operational support. Examples of that is technology and professional development to improve the service delivery. Financial resources for critical needs such as food and childcare and transportation. And to reduce barriers for community members to engage and seek resources from the city. And additional tools that may be necessary to support the office's mission. The tenant bill of rights is being drafted by staff currently. There's been community presentations and staff has received some feedback on the tenant bill of rights. The contract with Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid has been increased to add a local in-person consultations, monthly meetings at the library. Some outreach targeting different apartment complexes with flyers and increased access to paralegals and attorneys. This agreement with Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid, it helps clients address legal issues that impact housing stability, economic security, and personal safety. The services include assistance with evictions and landlord tenant disputes, protection from domestic violence, access to public benefits, and other civil matters that affect the well-being of vulnerable individuals and families. Over two hundred and thirty individuals have been assisted through this agreement in the past year. And it provides both virtual and in-person outreach events. Staff member currently travels to the city twice a month to conduct an outreach and meet with residents in need of legal help. So now we'll begin to transition into the general fund forecast. This is a slide that that we saw at the last budget workshop presentation. And it's just, we have a decision to make and we're at a fork in the road. For the first time, maintaining the current tax rate will result in a structurally unbalanced budget. And will require adjustments to be made to either increase revenues or decrease expenses. The options is for a balanced budget, which is more short-term. And it is essentially just kicking the can down the road, kicking the decisions down the road. On the right-hand side, you have the structurally balanced budget, and this is more long-term sustainability. This slide shows the tax rate scenarios that city council said to stay between. And that is the structurally balanced rate and the no new revenue rate. There are two different versions of the no new revenue rate on the slide, and I'll point out the difference in those. Also, just wanted to point out, this is a slide that shows the passage of House Bill nine. You can see what impact that was going to have, the four hundred thousand dollars. It would, that's the amount of revenue that the city would have lost in fiscal year twenty-six if this will would have taken effect. It won't take effect until fiscal year twenty-seven. The the bottom line, though, the numbers that you see on the screen are still the same. Because as the tax, the taxable value is going to increase because the House Bill nine doesn't take effect until fiscal year twenty-seven. And the no new revenue rate will decrease in a commensurate amount. So the revenues that you see here will remain the same. It's still the one hundred and nineteen point seven million dollars. Looking at the, starting with the structurally balanced rate at the sixty-four cents. You can see that it will generate a three point one million dollars more revenue. So the total revenues will be just under one hundred and nineteen million dollars. And on the expense side, with the addition of increasing HSAB by fifty thousand dollars, the total expenses would be just under one hundred and nineteen million dollars. So the budget will be balanced. Originally, staff was thinking on for the no new revenue rate that we would add the two hundred thousand dollars of for the HSAB to take it up to the maximum amount that city council requested. The fifty thousand for the Office of Community Support and Resources. And then use the remaining capacity to address department supplemental requests. That that thought has changed now, and and you can see if you look to the right, the revised no new revenue rate. The only thing that's different there is reducing the amount of departmental supplemental requests. What's shown here is one hundred thousand, and there's even been discussions of just keeping that at zero, really. But this would be in a cap at of one hundred thousand dollars. And it provides, if you follow it to the bottom, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of capacity. And this would be redirected for long-term sustainability. We can use this funding to help cash fund the fiscal year twenty-six equipment replacement, replacement request. By doing that, it reduces the fiscal year twenty-seven forward debt service amount because we won't have to issue any debt in fiscal year twenty-six. And it also reduces the fiscal year twenty-seven forward shortfall. And there's a slide coming up shortly that will show that overall it has an impact of saving a million dollars in fiscal year twenty-seven. So these are the general fund forecast assumptions. The annual property tax valuation growth is set at zero percent. In previous examples that we've shown council, this was actually set at four percent. We changed this to be more conservative to zero percent due to the what we've been experiencing over the past couple of years, and especially in fiscal year twenty-five. Or, or I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-six, where we're going to see a three percent decline in property values overall. So to be conservative, we're showing the forecast at a zero percent change in valuation. The annual sales tax growth is estimated to be one point seven percent. And this regional animal shelter phased out by fiscal year twenty-eight for clarity. This is just going from the regional shelter to a city-only shelter. So we, the city will certainly still have an animal shelter. This is just the revenue that we were receiving from our regional partners is phased out by fiscal year twenty-eight. And the, another assumption is there's no changes to the current fee amounts. Fees will be reviewed every three years. On the expense side, the annual personnel will increase between three and five percent. And annual operations will increase by three percent for inflation. Just, this is a continuation of the expense assumptions for the forecast. In fiscal year twenty-seven, there will be new expenses of two and a half million dollars. This is above and beyond the three percent assumed for personnel and operations on the previous slide. And this is really what's compounding the shortfall that we're looking at in fiscal year twenty-seven. So this is looking a year further down the road than than the budget that we're building right now in fiscal year twenty-six. So in fiscal year twenty-seven, we have engine number seven. We're setting aside one-third of the funding needed contingent upon the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response or safer grant being received. There are three ARPA positions from the loss of federal funding that will need to transition to the general fund. The ARPA operating expenses that will need to transition to the general fund from the loss of federal funding. The transit contribution from the general fund will increase due to the loss of some federal funding. And this loss of federal funding isn't the matches or the grants that we've received. This is due to the COVID funding that we have received. It will be over as of fiscal year twenty-six. And the legacy software and vehicle lease program. All, all of those spent expenses add up to two and a half million dollars in additional expenses for fiscal year twenty-seven. And also included in the assumption is the equipment replacement program. And that is an annual debt issuance to replace radios and fire equipment at an annual amount of approximately three million dollars. Noted on there is that the revised no new revenue rate scenario uses cash instead of issuing debt in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. And as we talked, and there's a slide coming up later that we'll talk even more about it. That using that five hundred thousand dollars in a capacity from the revised no new revenue rate scenario to cover these expenses produces a savings of the debt service payment for fiscal year twenty-seven forward. So just getting into a little more detail and a breakout of the general fund revenues and expenses for fiscal year twenty-six. For sales tax will make up thirty-four percent of the total revenues in the general fund. We've already talked that we're estimating one point seven percent increase over the twenty-five estimated amount. And we also include a partial year of the Buc-E's coming online in May of twenty-six. Property tax, the other major revenue source in general fund makes up, will make up thirty-one percent of revenue at the current tax rate amount of sixty point thirty cents. This does not include the seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars from the three properties that were purchased by the Housing Finance Corporations. In the event that the city's suit is successful and we're able to keep those on the tax roll, then we would get that, be able to add that revenue back. There's transfers make up twelve percent of revenue. This is a little higher than what it normally is, and that's because of the transfer from the Transportation Reinvestment Zone, FM one-ten. The city will meet its obligation, so we'll be able to transfer the the amount of money in in that TRIZ fund into the general fund during fiscal year twenty-six. Usually, the only thing in transfers for the most part is the cost allocation plan. And that is where the funds that receive services from support departments like the city manager's office, human resources, or legal contribute to the general fund for their proportionate use of those departments. We also have franchise fees. They make up eleven percent of total revenue. This is, this is both internal. We water wastewater and electric pay a franchise fee to the general fund. And external, where you have electric, the electric companies external or and other utility companies as well as cable companies that pay franchise fees to the city. So all other revenue sources within the general fund make up the next largest amount, which is seven percent. This, the largest single source within this is interest income, and that's around one point seven million dollars for fiscal year twenty-six. The the smallest category is licenses and permits. It makes up five percent of overall revenue. And that includes building permits and the solid waste holler permit fee. Ms. Reyes mentioned that we are expanding or enhancing the sales tax contingency plan. We do have a sales tax contingency plan currently. It's it's within our financial policies. It ensures that when we're experiencing declines in sales tax revenue, that we we employ different cost containment strategies to make sure that we're reducing expenses by commensurate amount. What this will do is, this will this will budget the fiscal year twenty-six expenses as if we're only going to operate on ninety-eight and a half percent of sales tax revenues. So one and a half percent of sales tax revenues will will not be used to build the fiscal year twenty-six budget. That remaining amount would be available for non-recurring expenses if revenues come in on target and and as planned. This, and it provides a proactive approach to managing the sales tax volatility. Over the past couple of years, we've had to freeze the city departments' capital outlay because of the volatility in sales tax. And implement a managed hiring program as well. And this also allows for more consistency in service and service delivery to the community. When when we have planned projects and when the departments are planning on this equipment, and then we have to freeze it. That interrupts that service delivery, that planned service delivery to the residents. Now moving from the revenues to the, some more detail on the expense side. Personnel, as we already mentioned, is the largest category of expense within the general fund. So personnel increases and for fiscal year twenty-six are two point six million dollars. Breaking that down for non-civil service employees, there's four hundred and sixty-one full-time equivalents. That makes up one point two million dollars of that amount for that's the three percent increase. For the civil service, there are two hundred and twenty-four full-time equivalents, and the cost for that is one point four million dollars. And this, these amounts are set by the meet and confer agreements. For fire, it's four and a half percent, and for police, it's five percent. There are new positions included in the preliminary fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget at a cost of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The municipal court bailiffs is one full-time and one part-time. When when that renovation is complete, the municipal court will need additional bailiffs for security. And the cost of that is a hundred and twenty-four thousand. And then we're transitioning the second of the two code compliance officers from community enhancement into the general fund. This particular code compliance officer will be split evenly between the general fund and hotel tax. So the general fund's portion will be forty-six thousand dollars. Continuing on with personnel, new positions included in the preliminary budget from reductions in operating expenses. So these would be what you refer to as budget neutral. It doesn't increase the overall budget. You have a public works administrative senior position for the general fund is sixty-six thousand dollars. This is being split between the general fund and stormwater fund because that's the the two different funds that this position benefits. And the economic development specialist that is being split, a third general fund, a third electric, and a third water wastewater. That is the same manner that the Hayes Caldwell Economic Development Partnership is allocated. And that's what's being, that contract is what's being reduced to be able to fund this position.
I have a question real quick. Can we go two slides back? Yeah, regarding the hot tax in the split fifty-fifty. Is that an eligible expense, like usage for hot tax?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So it's not necessarily being utilized for salary purposes, correct?
I'm sorry?
Because I thought salaries weren't an allowable. Because I thought salaries weren't an allowable use of.
Yeah, they are.
They are?
I think there's a max percent, but.
As as long as you meet the two-part test. For how, for how hot taxes can be spent heads and beds and.
Promoting tourism.
Promoting tourism of some sort.
And and this, and this particular position is for short-term rentals that collect the hotel tax.
Okay, that was the, I needed, thank you.
Good to know.
Moving from personnel to just the other general operating expenses. We talked about the equipment replacement plan. The debt service on that is just under five hundred thousand dollars. It's for radios and fire engines. The reason that it's included in the presentation is anytime we issue debt for a general fund purpose, it shifts, the payment on that, on that debt shifts revenue from the operating fund or the general fund to the debt service fund. So in, without increasing the the tax rate to the no new revenue rate, we we will be shifting about five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the debt service fund to be able to cover the debt service for the purchase of these items. And as you look through the list, you can see that there's an increase in software and vehicle lease payments. Our liability insurance has gone up, the our contribution to emergency medical services. The minimum HSAB is included in the budget. And there's a, the final bullet there says there's a request for a proposal for mowing services in July. That is actually changed now, and it will be bid out in the spring of twenty twenty six. We we thought we were going to have to bid that out sooner. The the provider that we're using found another company to continue providing the services. So we're, we won't need to bid that out until spring of twenty twenty six.
A couple of slides back on the stormwater tax. I thought that tax is only supposed to be used for stormwater and all the purposes.
That would, okay, for this position here?
A couple, a couple of slides.
For the public works administratives?
Right.
Yeah, yes, sir. So this particular position is this, they perform administrative functions for public works. And so, and the majority of the work is in the general fund, public works. That's why two-thirds of it is going to be covered by the general fund. The position also provides administrative oversight for the stormwater fund. So that's why the lesser amount, just a third of the cost, is going to be charged to the stormwater fund.
Then we're not using a hundred percent of that stormwater.
Correct. Yes, sir. It's, it's only thirty-three.
Brought up several times over the last few years, because remember it was all general fund. Then when we had the stormwater fee, that was used for the projects. And then it was a couple of years ago that I realized they were paying people out of there, and I'm going, what? And that's what I've been talking about for several years. Mr. Gonzalez is remembering before we paid people out of that fund and.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I do listen to you, ma'am.
Well, we're remembering the same thing, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're on the same page on that one.
Yeah.
That's all, God, thank you.
This slide just shows what's not included in the fiscal year twenty six preliminary budget. These are the supplemental requests that are not included. So there's a total of fifty personnel requests at just over five million dollars. There are five operating requests for a hundred seventy nine thousand, sixty capital outlay requests for one point eight million. So in total, there's a hundred and fifteen requests for seven and a half million dollars. And included within the packet, there was a detailed supplemental request so that you could see what each one of these requests are.
I'm remembering several years ago, I think it was eight million at that point. I'm guessing some of those are still on the list. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
The next couple of slides, you'll see this is no longer proposed. The the departments were asked to provide their top two supplemental requests, and those requests were prioritized as a team. You know, together, they're all prioritized. These two slides show how those were prioritized. And that's, the no longer proposed is there because we're wanting to use that additional capacity again to to help us, put us in the best position for fiscal year twenty seven and not bring on additional expenses that will just make the, what we're looking at for fiscal year twenty seven that much more challenging. So now we'll look at each one of those tax rates and what the forecast looks like, just taking all of this into consideration.
Before we do that.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a question, and we don't need to go back to the slide. But you had the assumption that property tax would not be going up or down. But yet, we've seen it going down the last few years. So why would we not be predicting it going down? Or is it because of all the new stuff landing on the ground that you feel it's going to make up for any losses?
It's the latter. It's just with the new improvements, the thought is, is that that'll be enough to at least break us even. We we have some, as you know, we have some projects coming along. Of course, the 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 two big ones that we have right now won't hit until fiscal year twenty eight. There's going to be a couple of years down the road, but we we still do have some.
There's stuff being built every day.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That lets me know.
So this is just a summary of the structurally balanced tax rate. It's estimated to be about sixty four cents. It'll bring in just over three million dollars of more revenue. It will allow for the HSAB increase of fifty thousand dollars. The Office of Community Support and Resources is not included with this scenario. Use of one-time funding to cover recurring expenses is not done in this scenario. Department supplemental requests are zero. And the fiscal year twenty six equipment replacement annual payment would be four hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. And there's zero available capacity.
And this includes that four hundred thousand you were talking about earlier that we thought wasn't going to be there, but because the bill doesn't take effect for another year?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
So with with all of that and taking into consideration, you can see fiscal year twenty twenty six, we are balanced at, when you move to twenty twenty seven, that is where, you know, on the slide that that shows all those new expenses coming on in fiscal year twenty seven, we're short seven point two million, and then you can see how that grows as we go to twenty eight and twenty nine.
But why would our revenue be flat if we've got so much stuff that's going vertical today, yesterday, tomorrow? I'm talking about housing and big things.
It's, that's the balance that we were just talking about, mayor, between, right now, we're, we're, we get monthly reports that show what the, what the median market price or value is on homes, and it is still declining. So the, so the the strategy with this is that as the, if we're still in a position where the market is correcting itself, that we're going to be able to add enough new value to break even.
Well, I thought that, I thought that was for just this next year, but I see this continuing on for two or three more years. And I was asking about the more years.
And and that's, that's the assumption that was used throughout this whole presentation.
The appraisals would continue to go down, but the new, new stuff would balance it out?
That, that, it would be flat, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This, this is.
I just didn't realize we're going that far in the future with it.
We're trying to make sure that we're not looking at things just as a one-year stopgap, and we're trying to look at things more, you know, stability of multi-year. But the other aspect is that, you know, not only have we had things go vertical, but then you've had things taken off the rolls. You've had things taken off the rolls with the the housing finance corporations. Potentially, you've had things taken off the the tax rolls with things that have been purchased by tax-exempt entities.
Yep.
And so it hasn't necessarily helped. You've had that hurt us, then you've had property taxes and sales tax. So like, all the revenues are just hitting us and being exacerbated one after another. So that's what we're experiencing. And so we know that it's not going to just take the stuff that goes vertical that we know that's in the pipeline.
And the House Bill nine is going to offset a bunch of stuff, too.
Some of that. We also are learning about other legislation that is impacting cities in regard to some of the the benefits that we have to provide to certain employees within the city. So there are, again, they they handicap our revenues, but then they give us more expenses that we have to absorb. So that's the balance that we're trying to achieve.
Where's Ann Richards with her? Don't pass the bill if you can't fill the till. Okay. She used to say that.
All right.
Another question.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, you have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And people listening, House Bill nine, can you explain to us what that actually is?
Would you move your microphone closer to you?
Oh.
No, just move it closer to where you're talking. There you go. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I I heard.
Thank you.
So House Bill nine increases the business personal property exemption from where it is at currently, which is at twenty five hundred. So up to twenty five hundred dollars can be exempted of personal property, and that increases to a hundred and twenty five thousand. So that, you know, that jump in exemption and tax exemption is what creates a loss of tax revenue for the city.
Well said.
Thank you.
And then there's the one, the House bill that passed, I don't remember the the number, last time, that was the the circuit breaker or something?
Yes.
That saved businesses a lot of money, but it's means less revenue for us.
Yes, yes, the, that, the circuit breaker capped it at twenty percent for a business that were valued under five million dollars. And yes, that is, that is, that works real similar to the homestead cap.
Yeah.
You know, at ten percent, it works the same, in a similar way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving on to that original no new revenue tax rate scenario that we were looking at. With this scenario, the tax rate would be right around sixty five cents. The additional revenue that that would bring in is three point nine million. The HSAB funding would increase by two hundred thousand. The Office of Community Support and Resources would be funded at the fifty thousand. There would not be any use of one-time funding to cover recurring expenses. And this scenario was where the department supplemental request would use up all of the available capacity of five hundred eighty five thousand. And you would still have that four hundred ninety thousand equipment replacement annual payment. And with with this scenario, you see your, the budget would be balanced at a hundred and twenty million. And the shortfall is in the outer years increased because we're bringing on those additional expenses. If we were to use that capacity to fill those budget supplemental requests, it's going to make the the expenses grow at a faster rate as as you're moving out. So these, this scenario, it were act, the shortfall is actually greater than that first scenario that we looked at.
Yeah, expenses are more.
Yes. And then the revised no new revenue tax rate scenario, this is identical to that original one that that we just showed, except for the last three bullets. So the last three bullets, the department supplemental request in this scenario is capped at a hundred thousand. You know, as as mentioned earlier, this was even discussed to make zero, dependent upon how this would would play out. We have the fiscal year twenty six equipment replacement annual payment would be zero because it would be cash funded. And the way that it would be cash funded is from the available capacity is about five hundred thousand dollars that you see below that four hundred and eighty five thousand. And the one-time funding that's not being used now that the budget is structurally balanced, as well as there is an excess fund balance request. One of the recommendations on that fund balance in excess of twenty five percent is to put five hundred thousand dollars towards this. So by doing that, that would allow us to cash fund the equipment replacement for fiscal year twenty six. And that's what this slide would look at, like. So we have a little bit of capacity in twenty six. We would use that towards paying off or to cash fund the, to cash fund the equipment replacement. And then in fiscal year twenty seven forward, the expenses are lower. As you, there is a summary slide coming up, but you'll see each year it's saving about a million dollars. And this is that summary summary slide. So it just takes those three different scenarios, and it provides a summary here. Just beginning with the first item, structurally balanced budget. All three of those tax scenarios will provide a structurally balanced budget. The increasing the HSAB by fifty thousand, all three of them will do that. Increasing HSAB by two hundred thousand, only the two no new revenue rate scenarios will do that. The Office of Community Support and Resources, only the two no new revenue rate scenarios will do that. You can see the difference in departmental supplemental requests between the original and revised or what's, what would be proposed from from staff. The fiscal year twenty six equipment replacement payment, that is the reduction for, to zero because we would be cash funding it in the revised model. And the estimated twenty six shortfall would be zero across all three. There would be that available capacity with the revised that would be used to to pay off or be paid towards the equipment replacement. And then looking ahead past fiscal year twenty six into fiscal year twenty seven, what would the shortfall be in fiscal year twenty seven, that that year? You can see that it's low, about a million dollars lower with that revised tax rate, no new revenue tax rate.
Okay. And if you said this, my apologies, and this is the third time I've been through this presentation. You made an excellent point about flat budgets and how with gasoline going up and other things going up. So is that accounted for in either of these sixty four ninety sixes that we can handle those things? Are we still flat?
So for fiscal year twenty six, we're still flat.
That's what I was afraid of.
For fiscal year twenty seven forward, we do have a three percent increase assumption that inflation, that we, that our budget will grow by three percent each year to be able to keep pace with what inflation might be.
And that just keeps pace?
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't allow for new programs and things like that?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's what I was afraid the answer was. Thank you.
So that takes us to what is being recommended for a fund balance in excess of twenty five percent. The total amount is three million dollars. And by the budget policy, any amount, I'm sorry, this, yeah, the total amount is three million dollars. That's in excess of twenty five percent. And the budget policy states that any amounts over the twenty five percent must be used for one-time or nonrecurring expenses. So the proposed uses for that would be to set aside one million dollars for the city hall, set aside one point five million dollars for capital outlay. And back on that request about what's not in the budget, it was the one point eight million in requests. So that that would cover one point five of it. And then to, for the cash funding, the equipment replacement, to set aside a half a million dollars towards that, which is part of the funding needed to to do that.
What's the difference in the last two? It's all equipment, right?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
The capital outlay, that's, that's buying equipment. Is that talking about just new equipment and not replacement? Yeah, what's the difference in those two?
Just that we, we typically, so the capital outlay, th- these are equipment items that we would only pay cash for. Just that we, uh, we typically, um, so the capital outlay, th- these are, uh, equipment items that we would only pay cash for. Uh, the, the, the last bullet is, is something that we don't typically have enough cash to just buy. So we, we issue some kind of debt obligation for it. And, and for fiscal year twenty-six, we're, um, trying to piece together enough cash to be able to cash fund it. To help us going down the road with the debt service payment.
Okay.
So before we get to the decision points, there's the, um, the fee recommendations and the general fund to discuss. Uh, uh, per council's direction, the fees will be reviewed every three years. And in fiscal year twenty-five, the special event and other utility fees are under review. That's the current year. That's what's being reviewed. In fiscal year twenty-six, next fiscal year, the park and library fees will be reviewed. The goal is for incremental increase over time instead of large increase at once. And that the fees will recover the cost of providing a service to the extent possible. These are the fees that are being recommended for fiscal year twenty-six. This slide are the special event fees. Uh, so you have the tier one and tier two. These are new fees. Um, so the, um, you'll have what the current fee amount is and then what the proposed fee amount is. And then a description of what that fee is. So the tier one fee is for a single day public event. Of over five hundred people and it includes services such as barricade rentals and traffic control plans. And that would be thirty-five dollars. Tier two would be eighty-five dollars and that is for a multi-day public event of over five hundred people. For a race or parade, um, that would be set at fifty dollars. This is for all races or parades regardless of the size. To ensure consistency and affordability for all the organizers. And then event road closure fee per block, the current fee is a hundred and sixty-five dollars and the proposed fee is one hundred dollars. And this reduces the overall cost for event organizers to close a block for an event from a hundred sixty-five to the hundred. Sure, said all that road closure fees are consistent and they're, um, all pay the same rate.
Okay, I have a question. If you've got a bunch of people and they just wanna gather on the courthouse square. Not asking, asking for any street closures, et cetera, would they fall into any of these?
I am not even one question deep on the response for that, so I will have to.
There, there's someone, uh, right behind you who, uh, I think is, is prepared.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Hayden Meagle, Director of Administrative Services. No, they wouldn't, that would not require a special event permit. Special event permits are only for those events that have over five hundred people or over two hundred and fifty people and serve alcohol. So it's kind of a understanding that those events are bigger events. And they require a little bit cord- more coordination with city staff.
Yeah, but there's no barricade or traffic control needed, so they wouldn't be in the street.
Be required for the courthouse line, or even for a smaller event. So we have another process that, it's called a permit determination form. Where they can submit, tell us, hey, this is the type of event that we're thinking. And just turn that into us just so that we know about it. And if it doesn't meet those criteria, we'll tell them, yes, you're good to go, go ahead. And there's no charge for that at all.
Okay. Uh, for, for the public, I did post on the message board that for some groups, that you're not even a organization. That even, you know, the eighty-five or thirty-five might be a problem, but I guess maybe not for what I was talking about. Was a bunch of people just want to gather and not close the street.
No, they, they wouldn't have to pay this permit.
Uh, question. So for the five hundred threshold, um, let's say I plan an event. I'm thinking it's gonna be a big bash, but I only get three fifty. Am I paying you prior to that event or after the event?
You are, because even with three hundred and fifty people, that's still a pretty big turnout and there's still likely to be effects. So, yes, you would still be paying that.
Okay.
Ahead of time.
Just trying to get ahead of any potential questions that may come, uh, with people who may want their money back. Cause, uh, an event didn't maybe get to the capacity that was desired.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, is there gonna be any exemption, exemptions on this fee? For an example, a church or several churches once, once you get together and it's gonna be more than five hundred people in it.
If it's all, that's another distinction. If it's all on private property, then a special event fee isn't necessarily needed.
Thank you.
Again, no barricades, no traffic control needed for that, so.
Right.
And I think that's, that's the, the answer for Councilmember Rodriguez is that even if the event. Didn't necessarily make the way that it was intended. The planning and everything for the event still took place. So all of the staff time that it took to work to get there because the, the organizer may have intended for it to be that. All that would have still been expended to make that, make that happen regardless of who showed up or didn't.
Oh, for sure. I definitely get the intent. I was just, it's one thing to say if you're gonna need barricade rentals, traffic control. And then it's another thing to say based on population. It having both makes it seem as if I have to meet both of those thresholds. Um, so that's the only reason. I was trying to potentially get ahead of that com- that, that question that may arise, any question that may arise because of that.
Yes.
And if it's a ticketed event where they're bringing money in. I'm, I'm more inclined to say, yes, let's charge the fee because I've got some money coming in to do that. Is there any consideration on that end?
That is something that we could look at. Um, that's something that we can consider.
All right, thank you.
Because I guess part of that is, it's still having that same impact whether or not it's ticketed or it's free.
I get that, but, but I, I wouldn't wanna make it free for somebody who's making money on the event.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Continuing with the, um, other fee recommendations, there's the planning and development fees. There's multiple fees and included, um, within the packet was a detailed list of all the planning and development fees. These fees were last updated March first of twenty twenty-three. And at the time, all but thirty-three fees were at or above fifty percent cost recovery. Since then, inflation has been around, around six and a half percent. And so what we're proposing is to increase those fees by five percent. They haven't been adjusted for two years now, over two years, two and a half years, I guess, by the time we get to Oc- October first. Um, and then the sidewalk fee in Lou, um, increasing that from ten dollars per square foot to twenty dollars per square foot. And this is, increases based on the average cost of sidewalk construction. And it reflects the rising cost of the construction, including inflation in the materials and labor since twenty fifteen.
Okay. And I had asked. We, we did say, and it's maybe been seven years ago, maybe eight, that we were going to do an incremental. Just whatever it was, three percent, five percent every year, but then we take a hard look at it every three years. That way we weren't losing out. And it's that incremental thing that Ms. Reyes talks about sometimes with utilities, et cetera, so we don't have the big jumps. So have we not been doing that? I'm, I'm looking here and it says. The, it, the direction was specific to utility rates and planning and permit fees. Not seven years ago it wasn't. And I don't recall that we've ever said, don't do that. Um, and so, um. That's when things were up to, went from whatever to something in tw- thirty-seven cents. And so, um, at that point, we said, well, we're either gonna round up to the nearest twenty-five, fifty or dollar. I don't remember what it was. But we did make that change the following year. So are we not doing these incremental routinely? I mean, that was activity center fees. That was all kinds of stuff. That we were doing and I don't recall us ever saying we were not gonna do it anymore.
No, um, we haven't been. We've really just been doing it on those, the electric utilities, water utilities.
That wasn't even in the conversation when we, when we talked about this.
Go was really more towards the utilities when, um, that was our understanding and the planning and development fees. And planning and development, there was a, a, a little bit of concern just because of all the, the, um, stuff it would take in terms of. Where people were in the entitlement process, but also updating everything on the website. Um, but now Ms. Hernandez is here and she'll.
No, I'm, I'm not against this. I'm just wondering why we're not still doing, what is it? I say we're good at spending money? We're not good at bringing in money? So I don't know why we quit doing that, although we've had a lot of personnel changes.
I think that's probably what's happened and we probably just didn't, that was one that fell off the radar.
Okay. Maybe it's time to put it back on. Yes, ma'am.
Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. There was some hesitancy in the past to do annual updates. Because the, the backend of our permitting software was very complicated to do those updates. They have now, our permitting software, my government online, has now made that much easier and given us access to be able to make those updates. Whereas before we had to manipulate the spreadsheet, send it to them, wait for them. It took a very long time. So we are actually on board with doing annual updates now that the software has been improved to be able to accommodate those in a.
Okay. But this was outside of your, like I said, it was activity center fees. It was a lot of park stuff. Uh, which is why it was Mr. Cops saying, yeah, that thirty-seven cents is, you know, was tough.
Do you remember that, Ms. Case, by any chance? I know it would have been before your time, but I just didn't know if it'd be, it was something with your, okay.
It was two directors back on parks.
Several, yeah.
But, but it was, uh, I think it, it probably would have been more in the hands of finance and we've been through several there, so.
Yeah.
And I was gonna speak to that too. I had, I think, provided a little bit of an answer on the message board for planning and permitting fees specifically. We do have some that have always been in the pennies because you end up in the hundreds, thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
Um, but some of that has to do with cash payments. Now we accept check and credit cards, so it's a lot easier to have those pennies, whereas before we had to keep a lot of coins on hand. So we're not doing that anymore in our department.
Center.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So what do we need to do to make this? We're gonna do it every three years. Everything's supposed to be divided up. You know, you're either gonna be A, B, or C. And e- every year we're doing something. It looks like we didn't do any in twenty-four and we're maybe gonna get some done in twenty-five.
Y'all can give us that direction and that's something that we can build into the, the fee ordinance when we bring that, that forward. As part of the budget adoption process.
You're, you're saying that we should explore like all those different kind of fees that you're saying?
That we do.
Like assess, reassess?
Uh, like cost of living, three percent every year. But then every third year, we're looking at each one of them in a, you know, do we need to go up? Did the expenses associated with this program go up? Then we do a hard look and individual look. But that we at least don't lose out, uh, in, in the two years in between.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I would be fine with that. I do think that in that process that it's also important to, um. Assess like the value that our neighbors are getting for some of these fees.
Um.
Good point.
Like the other day, yesterday, I saw a thread and then folks were talking about, should I get this gym membership or do a membership at the, um. What is it? The activity center? And it was a really interesting conversation. I hadn't contemplated even like what our neighbors perceive to be. Values of our programs like that. Um, so I feel like that's like a super niche example, but it's just something that comes to mind.
Yeah. Down here. You're okay with the, the, the small increment and then the hard look every third year for all of these? Are you okay with that?
I mean, I'm comfortable with it. As far as putting a specific percentage, I mean, it's to assume three percent may.
Talking three, not, what, it, it originally was intended to be cost of living. But if we, I, I'm fine with that. I'm not talking about a five, ten, fifteen percent. That's too much.
Mm-hmm.
But we're just trying to, to keep up because our parks fees bring in half of the cost. Not even close to half. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
What's that, what?
And I, I don't think it's even close to a half of what, if you look at the parks budget and what the fees bring in. It's, Ms. Case is gonna give us. She, she's gonna give us the, closer to the right number than I was coming to. I said less than half. I think that was probably, that's at least correct.
Correct, yeah, it's.
But it's.
Oh, don't worries. Um, so we did the cost recovery study in twenty nineteen. And the city, we came to the city council in twenty twenty, um, proposing, um, mild increases. Um, ultimately, we're recovering somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent of a resident rate. Um, city council did, uh, provide its direction to cost recover seventy-five percent of the non-resident rate. So, uh, we did that specifically for facility rentals, not the activity center memberships. Um, so activity center memberships are still, um, very, very low compared to, um, surrounding communities. And obviously other gyms, um, as was referenced, um, here in our community. Um, for a year for an adult, um, like my age, for example, it's ninety-eight dollars a year. Um, that does not include the additional fitness classes because those are done by total wellness, but that's two dollars a class. Um, so still very, very affordable.
Yeah, but we were, but, but we have not been going up the COLA each year, or have we?
No, ma'am. Um, we are about to, um, reevaluate the fees. Um, we're hiring a firm in which to do that and look at those fees.
Okay.
And bring it back to council for consideration.
Cause was y'all's twenty twenty-six or twenty-seven? Remind me, on the previous slide, was it?
Twenty-six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, checking down here if y'all are interested in looking at the incremental with the hard look every third year.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I'm seeing heads nodding, et cetera, down here. I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, did I get your response?
I said yes.
Okay, thank you. I understood. My bad. Okay, so y'all just, it's something to start looking at and figuring out what the percent would be and where it makes sense. And maybe some places it won't, but I don't know where that would be. Okay.
Can I just, I wanna clarify a point. I just wanted to say like for the record, the feedback on the activity center programming was very positive. I think it was one thing that was like, maybe if they had more barbells or a weight rack or something. But generally speaking, I echo what Ms. Case said, like it's a great value, so.
Could, could we go back once? Sorry to bring this up again. I just, I'm looking at it again. So for the race and parade fee, um, cause I'm getting a bit confused. So three of, or all four of them of these various fees are in some way addressing some sort of traffic closure. And so is, I guess for race and parade fees, if I think about the Juneteenth race, it just happened this past weekend. That was all on, none of it was on road. Would they still need per this, this new proposed to get a permit? Even though it's not requiring traffic control or whatever? I'm just trying to figure out why fifty is higher than the special event, given it's likely gonna be less people.
So the race and parade fee and event road closure fee are really to simplify. So the only thing that we have in our ordinance right now in terms of road closure are short-term road closures. I guess we also do have long-term road closures. It's more geared towards construction projects that might be blocking a lane of traffic for an extent, for a day or for an extended amount of time. We don't really have a fee right now other than that to point to. And that's why, at least that event road closure fee, that's really knocking down the price. I mean, an example is the farmer's market downtown. Um, we have them paying per lane for half a block. And based off of that short-term road closure fee, this is simplifying that to where we have just a flat fee. If they're having any type of road closure at all. If it isn't affecting the roads, then I need to go back and check to see if we would be even charging the race parade fee. I believe that's only if it's on the public right of way.
Okay. Cause like even a parade, um, could it fall under the special event tier?
Yes.
Hypothetically?
Yes, a parade could fall under.
So would somebody who's hosting, let's say the Hispanic Heritage Parade that happens annually? Um, would they have to pay the thirty-five and fifty, given that it meets both of those justifications?
I don't believe so. I believe it's only, it's one or the other.
Cause it starts at Centro, it ends up on the courthouse square and there's nothing else blocked off or anything at the square, correct?
Well, we do, uh, like have typically law enforcement out there and things like that as far as traffic control and those things. There are barriers.
When you land after the parade.
Oh, yeah, we land at, um.
At the courthouse.
Courthouse.
But there's nothing outside the perimeter of their parking, correct? Not, not to the ones I've attended?
No.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, what category, without definitions of.
Would you even need one for the vent where you land? And when they walk, it's still using a lane. And when they walk, it's still using a lane, but there's no barricades.
I believe that would only be the parade fee for that one and it wouldn't need the special event fee. Because you're only, it's, it's only in the right-of-way. And whenever it gets to the courthouse lawn, we wouldn't be charging for that.
Yeah, so that's where, that's sort of where my question comes from, cause I, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out why that would be more expensive. Because it's not needing necessarily personnel and the things that we talked about as far as a special event fee.
I can tell you that if you want to block eight city parking spaces, not the street, spaces, for a blood drive van on Sunday morning, it's ninety dollars. So how does that fit in here?
It's blocking a lane of traffic. That's what we have right now for the parking spaces.
It's not blocking a lane of traffic, it's only taking up the parking spaces.
Okay.
Cause I do, I do understand the ensure consistency and affordability for all organizers. I think we may need to start, maybe workshop this a little bit more to get further clarification. Cause I, like I said, even the Juneteenth race, my question would be, would they need the permit? Would they need to pay the fifty, even though none of the race took place on roadway? It was all city trails.
Okay.
I think the deal is one size does not fit all, even though you've got two tiers there.
Right.
Um, I, I think there's more things going on. And if it's an event that they apply for city funding, thousand bucks or whatever, and they receive that, then they still have to pay this?
That funding was actually set up so that they could pay some of their fees and all of that.
Okay.
I have like a comment. I, I agree with both mayor and, um, Councilwoman Rodriguez that like there's kind of like some gray spaces, right, or like questions. I, my personal experience since I was elected in twenty twenty, so not that long, has been that you guys have done, uh, I've made a lot of progress in kind of trying to streamline things or make it more.
Yes.
Um, just like clear. But I will say that in my experience, working alongside some, um, community organizations or nonprofits, you all still, uh, allow, um, kind of like, uh, I wanna, like, you, it's, it's an equitable approach. Like if they, if they explain things like the mayor said, like, well, they're not taking up a lane, it's parking spaces. I feel like generally, the experience from our community has been positive where y'all are pretty, uh, open to having those conversations. My concern, I think, is that sometimes it just depends on whether those external entities know how to ask the questions, right? Or even contemplate whether there, uh, there is room to kind of deviate from that outline. Like I understand that you guys put this out because you didn't want, you know, there was some community chatter like, oh, some groups get favoritism and it's, you know, whatever. But there's a difference between favoritism and like an equitable approach and then also weighing like the community value that these, whether it's a blood drive or a parade brings to our community. So all that to say, I think we're doing a good job improving the process, making it clear while leaving space for an equitable approach. But I do think we, yeah, there needs to be, I don't know, something workshop to be able to make it so that our entire community kind of knows that they can and should feel comfortable engaging in dialogue with city staff instead of like seeing the packet of like the application and then being like, oh no. Like there's no way, like I can't meet all these requirements, I can't, you know, pay this, like, like pick up the phone so you could chat, you know?
Yes, and that's why we thank council for authorizing the special events coordinator position that we've had over the past year to really have that single point of contact who can help the event organizers go through everything. And they might have this one idea that would be, that would be really complex and we're like, hey, have you thought about doing this? And it simplifies it for them, it simplifies it for us as well. And really to try to help facilitate that. And we understand that the events really do bring a lot to the community. I mean, this, we didn't actually calculate the cost recovery of this, but just with the number of individuals that we have involved in the review for the events, this doesn't really come that close. Um, but no, we're happy to look at this further and determine what we can do and discuss this further before we bring it back.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely would appreciate that, cause I, I, I wanna be clear, I, I wanna be a proponent for this for sure. Um, I just think it maybe needs a little bit more clarity, maybe even would benefit from some definitions.
Sure.
Um, and so, yeah, thank you.
And, and that's part of the tough thing because the events are so different. And trying to find, okay, this category right here, what can we, what can fall under there, but not having something different?
Yeah.
For everything. Yes.
Oh yeah, it's huge from what it was before where people had to figure out where all to go. Then we went through the spell where we were charging for the parade stuff and now we're, we're, we're back to more, um, service and that, you know, we've got the separate routes. If you choose one of those, we're good, cause it's already laid out and all that other stuff. And so it's been, it's been great where we've been in what the last year, maybe a little more than that. And, and the organizations have greatly appreciated it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that, that takes us to the major takeaways and the general fund. Um, after this would be the decision points for the general fund. So the major takeaways, the first one is just fiscal year twenty-six is an incredibly challenging year. And it will continue to be challenging, you know, in years as we move forward if changes are not made. We, we have sales tax revenue estimate for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, as we touched on earlier, is lower than our fiscal year twenty-three actual. So we're operating on the same amount of sales tax revenue that we were three years ago. The property tax revenue estimates are estimated to decrease. And this is another place where I, I need to remind you that one point eight would be one point four because of House Bill nine not being implemented until fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, at the current tax rate of sixty point three cents. Um, that includes the housing finance corporations removing three properties from the tax roll, decreasing revenues by seven hundred and nineteen thousand. And the House Bill nine won't actually happen until fiscal year twenty-seven. As we discussed earlier, there are more demands than resources. Those, you know, demands are just the, the cost of providing services to residents. Departments are, are required to keep their budgets flat for the second straight year, which is the equivalent of a five percent budget cut over both of those years when you factor in inflation. And in addition to that, they had to reduce their budgets by a total of a hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-six.
That's cumulative?
Yes ma'am.
Across departments, everybody contributes a little?
Yes, uh, uh, in the aggregate, it, it came to a hundred thousand dollars. What that doesn't include though was the, um, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cuts had to be made by departments just to keep their budgets flat. Because we, we do have some contractual arrangements where some of their expenses had to go up. And in order to keep their budget flat, they had to make cuts to keep their budgets flat. So in total, they made two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cuts and, and those were provided in the packet as well. A, a structurally balanced budget requires either a three point one million dollar cut to programs and services or a tax rate increase to the estimated structurally balanced rate of about sixty-four cents. The no new revenue tax rate will generate the same amount of property tax revenue on property tax in both the current year, fiscal year twenty-five, and next year, fiscal year twenty-six. And it will take at least the no new revenue rate in order to add new programs and services such as the Office of Community Support and Resources and increase the HSAB allocation by two hundred thousand dollars, as well as best position the city for long-term sustainability. It's important to think differently about the budget. We, we need to be proactive during tough economic times. That's one of the reasons why, um, there, we've already implemented a managed hiring program. Uh, knowing that next year, the next couple of years look to be challenging, so we're, we've already implemented a managed hiring program. Um, look at creating contingency plans to minimize service level impacts and make the city more agile and responsive to market conditions. And that's what the, um, expanding the sales tax contingency plan is designed to do. Do an internal review of personnel as vacancies occur before just filling that, uh, position. Making sure that it's the right thing to do is to, to fill that position for that department and for the city. And evaluate fleet inventory and other cost drivers. And by that, you know, looking at fleet and making sure that it's right-sized. And so that brings us to the decision points for the general fund.
Roll back a slide. I'm going to declare a break.
Okay.
So that we can be fully focused on the decision points when we return.
Okay.
Counsel, it is seven twelve. Please be back in your seat. Don't maybe come find you with the bell at seven seventeen. The bell. I've returned at seven twenty-one and our job right this minute is to provide direction on the decision points from the, um, presentation. Uh, do you need to do any, any other explanation or can I just go straight to them?
You can just go straight through them, ma'am.
Okay, so counsel, we're being asked a question here and it's basically the sixty-three oh four or what should be the no new revenue rate, which means when your appraisal is going down, this rate goes up. It's calculated to be revenue neutral, at least for the vast majority of folks.
Yes ma'am.
Or, uh, expense neutral to, to the taxpayer.
True.
Okay, so counsel, I need to know from you if you are at the sixty-three oh three, I'm sorry, sixty-four oh three or the sixty-four ninety-six. Ms. Rodriguez?
Um, I am definitely leaning towards a sixty-four ninety-six, uh, for the following reasons. Um, I said last time that I don't take tax increases lightly, especially given the financial constraints that are being felt by all of our neighbors. Um, but knowing that this would mean an additional two hundred thousand dollars for social service funding as well as money for the Office of Community Support and Resources, I think these are important investments back into our community. Um, and yes, that's where I fall.
Okay, and the theory is that it's expense neutral to the taxpayer. It's, and it may not be to everyone exactly, depending on what their appraisal is, but, okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
As everybody knows, I hate raising taxes, uh, but I agree with my, my colleague, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, uh, pretty much the same reasons. And therefore I'm in favor of the sixty-four ninety-six.
Which hopefully will not raise folks' taxes.
Yes ma'am.
Of what they pay.
Thank you for clearing that.
Yeah, Ms. Garza?
Um. I don't know.
I can come back?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay. Uh, if y'all will turn on your microphones, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez, where are you, sir?
Uh, the no new revenue rate.
I'm sorry?
The no new revenue, so.
Okay.
Sixty-four ninety-six.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza?
I'm at the sixty-four oh three.
Sixty-four oh three?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
I'm at the sixty-four oh three.
Okay. Uh, I'm at the sixty-four ninety-six. Ms. Garza?
I have a lot of thoughts about this. I feel that it's like interesting and some neighbors might perceive it as a little bit manipulative to put the framing as either you support the revised or you do not get HSBC increases or the Office of Community Support and Resources because we know that you could flip and reverse other things and make those things happen, right? Um, having said that, I do not have the expertise or capacity to go in and flip and reverse things. That's y'all's job. Um, but this is what is presented. So, yeah, I just, I wanna name that because I, I don't have a more drilled down or concise way of expressing that. But I do know that that is something that a lot, a lot of our neighbors like perceive, right? Um, having said that, I guess, given that I don't have a magic wand to propose anything else that would make it so that we do have those two things, I, I'm, I guess I, I'm forced to vote for sixty-four point ninety-six.
Okay, and something that we haven't talked about is the, um, change that will be on the ballot. If I say any of this incorrect, stop me. But what the state did was to increase the exemption for school tax only by.
By forty thousand dollars.
Okay, it was sixty last time and forty this time, I think?
Yes ma'am, so it'll be at a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, so it would be, uh, another forty thousand. And I know due to that, my overall tax bill went down last time. Now that's still going on a constitutional amendment to be voted on November third or whatever it is. So it's not in effect yet. I'm, I'm betting it's gonna pass, but I mean, I can't make policy here betting on that. Uh, but if that happens, then that will benefit the public.
Yes it will.
Okay. All right, uh.
Oh ma'am, I, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So both of these show an estimated FY twenty twenty-seven shortfall with a difference of a million dollars. So are we essentially just kicking the can down the road and we're gonna have an even bigger problem next year?
Uh, I'm sorry, sir, I, I didn't.
I said, are we essentially kicking a can down the road and we're gonna have a bigger problem next year?
On the shortfall?
For, uh, no, we, we are, there's nothing that we're doing in fiscal year twenty-six that is kicking the can down the road. Uh, the reason that fiscal year twenty-seven is on there, it just shows the, the difference between the two rates and how we're able to reduce that shortfall with the no new revenue rate by a million dollars.
Okay, all right. I was just thinking out loud, but okay, cool, thank you.
Well, good, good point to bring up.
The only, the only thing we are kicking down the road is just in the sense of the, the needs. Um, and, and that's, I wanna speak to what Councilmember Garza said. When you're talking about the num, the number that we're talking about, I don't know how we flip and reverse it honestly without cutting people. And that's the bottom line because when you look at the fact that we had two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and that all departments collectively had to reduce already from operating, another hundred thousand dollars that they had to reduce in operating. They've gotten no increases in their operating budget over the last two years. That it's really getting to the point where it's gonna start impacting services to our community members and then the other part would be looking at personnel. So I just wanted to name that in the sense that with all, like genuineness, it's not a matter of us trying to say you can't have these other things without making other sacrifices. We have nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have to achieve in a managed hiring program, which means that, and I'm just gonna be honest. I hear about it a lot of times from my employees, my directors will tell you, everybody's burned out. They're being asked to do a lot of things and they're not always getting extra people to help and those kinds of things. And so they're being asked to continue to, to keep their service levels up. And so that's why it's really important that we just to name that is that it's very difficult with everybody struggling. And I, I know that that's important for the community as a whole. It's not just our employees. But that is something that I know we're struggling with every year, trying to figure out how to continue to make services go as far as we possibly can with the dollars that we have.
Yeah, and I appreciate the, the dialogue, the, the comments because you said like there's no way to flip and reverse it without getting rid of people. And I understand your role and why we appointed you to this role is to manage the operations, which a part of that is ensuring that staff have a good working environment because when they have the resources that they need, they show up better for our community. I'm fully aware of that. But I was elected by the people and a lot of the times our neighbors are not privy to all of the intricacies involved in what is necessary to run a municipal government. And so you talk to a regular neighbor and they, their response to your comment about you'd have to get rid of people, they'd be like, okay, then get rid of people, right? Um, or, you know, they'd bring up things like persistent feedback, like negative interactions with the utility folks or negative interactions with the permitting office. And so I feel like there's a disconnect between those of us who are privy to the multi-layered, like multi, like, like very complicated realities of making sure our city stays with the lights on, you know, safe roads, whatever. And our neighbors who are trying to understand why they feel like they're not getting bang for their buck while also having to live with the reality of very bad economic times, right? Um, and so I think that conversations like this are important for our neighbors to have access to, um, because. access to because I just want them to know that we are naming these things. It's not like we're not like ignoring them, but it's just a little bit more complicated than they think, I guess. So, yeah.
Moving on to item two, continue to fund the employee compensation philosophy, which is cost of living to match inflation. So I need to know, I guess that's a yes or no on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so whoever would like to answer first, I'll take your response or I'll go around the table and put you on the spot.
Mayor, I can go first and I'm gonna be a yes. But I'd like to add this to, to this yes, is I was looking at the feedback, our survey feedback from our city employees and I was really impressed with the numbers of that, the employees that we're retaining. And it's because of y'all guys. And I really, really appreciate that. Stephanie, thank you very much and for your city manager as well.
Okay, who wants to go next?
I'm a yes.
You're a yes, Mr. Mendoza? Mr. Gonzalez, Lorenzo Gonzalez?
I'm a yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Scott? Okay. Ms. Garza? Ms. Rodriguez?
Do you mind if we go back to slide thirty-five to actually see how many people we're talking about and how much?
Right.
Whatever we need to do.
Yeah, I think last time I asked that whenever the percentage are, are put there to have the dollar amount associated with that. Do y'all remember that?
Yeah, we do. We did, we thought about that specifically.
But like in the decision point, I feel like might be helpful.
There it is. It has the dollar amount and the number of employees that it reflects.
Yeah, so this is sort of why I, because when I saw this slide, I'll be honest, I was shocked to see that for our non-civil employees versus our civil, the very, the difference almost half, but yet you still see an additional point two million. Those meet and confer agreements, when was the last time that that was discussed?
We'll be actually in with a negotiation here coming up in twenty twenty-six.
So one of the things we'll be talking with mayor and council about in an upcoming meeting is whether we, whether we negotiate for another three years or if we do an extender. So we'll need to talk with mayor and council about that to see where y'all want to go with it. So it is upcoming in the next year for us to have those negotiations if that's the route that we go.
Yeah, I, I just, um.
So this is the last year, this is the last year of the current agreement.
Because I imagine those four point five and five percent are fixed. They don't account for economic changes. They don't account for legislative changes. Every other part of our budget accounts for that. Y'all as city staff, when preparing the budget, has to account for that. It's costly. I want to see our people taken care of, yes, but my heart goes out to non-civil employees. I just, seeing this for the first time, the contrast, I, it, it does bring some questions for me. But anyway, going back, I'm, yes, I, I, I'm a supporter specifically for like our non-civil too. Like I said, I want people to feel appreciated. I want them to feel valued. Our city employees, both top to bottom, do things for us that many of us will have no full conceptual, or no idea fully what they, what they bring. And so I just want to say that. I just wanted for the public to see that contrast, to go back and, but yes, yeah, I'm, I'm for it. And I look forward to reviewing the agreements to, in the, in the future.
Okay, and I'm a yes. So, Ms. Garza, your thoughts?
I'm a yes, but Amanda's question's kind of covered mine. I remember the first staff survey and even our staff kind of named that, the discrepancy in the, I guess, the, the salary and benefits between civil and non-civil service. And I think that, that needs some attention. Yeah, it feels, it feels, it feels kind of unfair or like, like what, what negotiating resources do non-civil employees have? Like, how do they advocate for what they want? Because they had some interesting ideas I had not even contemplated. Like, I think fo, and again, this is just the first survey and this is just based on my memory, but some folks were talking about, they gave thoughts on remote work versus non-remote work. They gave thoughts on resources to for like education support, like furthering education support and things like that. So it's like, aside from that survey, what avenues exist so that our non-civil service staff can advocate for things beyond just salary or even salary, right? Because So we, we meet with our, so we, we survey and every two years, we try to do that just to make sure that we're staying in, in touch with what our employees want and need to continue to be an employer of choice. And then also, what we've been doing is also doing kind of a roadshow where everybody, like we go out and meet with every single employee throughout the city and we let them talk with us about the things that are concerns and all those other kinds of things. You know, we'll inform them about the things that we need to inform them about, but then we also usually try to open it up. And I was just actually talking to Hayden today to say, hey, we need to go and do that. And I know Mr. Gonzalez just finished doing that. He did it even with civil and non-civil with, in regard to being for our customer service initiative, the One City, One Team. So he went and did that. But that's how we do it is really just, I have a very open door. If any, there's anybody that has concerns about things, they know that we have been very clear about the fact that we want to take care of our employees. We want to make sure that employees know. I sent out an email to employees informing them ahead of this budget workshop to let them know they're, that they were gonna hear, because there's a lot of people who pay attention to the council meetings more than we may all realize, that they're gonna hear about some of the dire situations, but please understand that employee raises are still included in our proposed budget and that we would continue to work through whatever challenges they are and reassuring them about how important that they are to providing the services for our community. So also, I, like I said, I email every city employee and sometimes I'll get emails back, you know, thank you for communicating with us. Thanks for keeping us abreast. But really, there's employee events. We just had one at the safety, for Safety Expo and we had a lot of our field workers and everybody from around the city. I talked to them one-on-one and asked how they were doing, you know, those kinds of things. So we find those opportunities to stay in touch with our employees as much as we possibly can and, and try to have those avenues for open dialogue. I appreciate you sharing that and also the surveys. I think that's really important. To my understanding, at least from some folks, they had indicated that that was like the first or that they could remember, like formal effort to gauge a broad range of their comments, questions, concerns and burning desire. So I appreciate that under that, your direction that happened. I do think that as policymakers, like we are lucky right now that we have you as an appointee, right? But like that is, it's not codified anywhere. It's not written anywhere. Like the processes that you have included and improved, it's because you, it matches like your philosophy of leadership. But like in the future, I, I mean, like not, our civil service, they have their meet and confer process, right? Like they have that. And our non-civil service are up to the will and the whim of whoever is running the show. I mean, again, I appreciate that it's you running the show right now, but I do think it's important to name that. But yeah, thank you for all the context. I do want to say it's not all me. I have amazing people. Well, you know, you know what I mean. That, yes. You at all. Yes, yes. I just, I just want to name them and recognize them because it really is a team effort and I thank you for that recognition. So thank you.
Yeah, would you send us what the raises have been over the last few years, maybe twenty nineteen? Because we have gotten the non-civil higher than three in the last year or two, haven't we?
Yeah.
The last time that we had the increases, and we can go back to that slide.
Yeah, I can go back to that slide.
That, that shows that, ma'am. The, the last time that it was higher was when we did the compensation study and we were very thankful that, that mayor and council gave us seven percent to implement the compensation study result, uh, results of that. So that's why there has been so much ground that has been made that we don't want to lose ground. We're at a very competitive, you know, place, we believe right now. So you'll see right there in twenty twenty-three, that's when we got that extra. It says seven percent, that was CPI. We got five percent, but there was also some that we did for implementing the merit, I mean, the market study. And that was a compensation study that we did and that involved all of our director's team.
I was looking for the cola.
That's the cola. That's the cola right there.
So, and I don't know how, I'd still like to see it next to the meet and confer.
Sure, we can, we can definitely show it to you both ways.
And that would be good. So, and, and I, and I understand your point and I do not disagree with you at all on this one, but I just wanted to note that we did do better.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I appreciate, I think that our, like, current council and past council and like our ability to come together, even though we do not align on a lot of things and our like recognizing the value of investing in our, in our city staff, I think that that has, like it shows, right, that we're, we're trying, given the financial constraints. I just think that, um, yeah, it's, it's just important to keep our eye on it. And there's, I mean, I'm gonna be honest too with y'all. Is that something that we're gonna have to work through is with the legislature right now? Like there's two bills that have been approved. One is, is involving health insurance coverage for first responders and it says that we have to pay, offer them coverage that is similar to what they had while working for the city. Well, the way that it works for the city is when you retire, you have to pay the full rate. The city no longer subsidizes a great portion of your, of your, of your premium.
Well, this is after they leave?
This is after they leave. So that's something we're gonna have to reconcile. And this has just happened with the legislative session. And so we're having to work through that. That's gonna have some financial implications. The other thing that's gonna have some financial implications, not in a, in a bad way, but it's something we opt into, is because with the Texas municipal retirement system, there, you can, you can elect to do six percent, seven percent or eight percent contributions and
On their side.
On, on, on their side and our side. And we match their, you know, match that two to one. But the, Governor Abbott just signed a bill saying that now you can elect eight percent into TMRS. And we didn't realize that that was something that was being contemplated. So other cities are gonna start doing that and opting for the eight percent because that offers a higher retirement benefit to their employees. So we've got to look at how we can do that. So I'm comfortable with looking at the three percent right now, but needing to also look at this retirement aspect because others, it's gonna be harder for us if, as that continues to increase and we don't keep up with what's happening, then it's gonna be harder for us to actually do that in the future if it were to go up to say nine percent or ten percent or keep up with those other cities. So that's something that we're having to balance with everything else. So just want y'all to be aware of some of those things that we're also working through outside of this.
When is that one effective?
September first.
This year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez had something and then I've got, I've got one more arithmetic question. What would the four percent cost?
And then he has something after.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the discussion. I want to be so clear. I don't doubt the assertion, I mean, data even substantiates it, that y'all are doing everything in your power, all of y'all, to take care of our people. I don't doubt that at all. I think the thing that remains my concern is even though y'all have that desire, given the constraints from those agreements, your hands are tied in a way. You could have all the desire in the world to really take care of our non-civil service employees, but given those hard constraints, we can't. It's affecting us financially significantly. And so I, I just wanted to be clear, like I don't, I don't doubt what, what it is that y'all are trying to do and I appreciate it. I, I really do. And I think that's why it's important for me to mention that because, you know, you mentioned the legislature, you mentioned, the thing is, when it comes to civil service, they have advocates. They have lobbyists. I've seen it personally. Those bills that you're talking about, I've seen it personally. The thing is, I, I just believe, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I just feel like me as a council member has to be the one advocate necessary from this side of the dais when it comes to our non-civil employees. There has to be an advocate for them. It's just not. Like, like to Alyssa's point, God forbid something happens with you, like who's to say the next person care, doesn't, you know, chooses not to carry that forward?
Well, that, that's also being impacted because the legislature said that you can only pay some, like our agreements that you have are appointees right now are grandfathered in, but any new appointee that you bring on after September first, you can only do so much severance. And that's gonna also affect the profession as a whole in terms of who wants to get into these jobs. So it's just, it's something just, you know, the changing landscape that we have to stay abreast on.
For sure.
And so
But it's just like, I guess for me, it's like when you have your civil service, the protections continue to grow, right? The money continues to grow. Your non-civil, it's like the attacks continue to grow, not the help. That's my concern is that when, when it comes to us here, I've taken the time to tour even some of those departments, which I appreciate your team helping us make, make that happen. I do so and I find it important because I want to see the people who are actually doing the work. From this dais, we can't see that. And for me, those people deserve, all of our people deserve somebody to advocate for them on this side of things in the same ways that the, the meet and confer agreements do. And you, you don't see that in the same ways. And like I said, for me, it just gives me concern, given that those are fixed rates that we have to continue to do year after year. Meanwhile, that's not the same for everybody else. And the disparity, I just don't want people who are non-civil to think that it's the intention of council to put them less of a concern, you know, versus civil. Because that, if it, if it was my world, that wouldn't be the case.
And, and I do know.
So I just wanted to be clear on that.
No, I appreciate that. And I will tell you that I know that, like the associations that we've negotiated with in the past have always really said, us being at this level hopefully helps to strive the other groups to being at that level. And we have tried, like Mr. Gonzalez was here at one time when Mr. Gonzalez is one that would say, well, I don't want to do anything less for non-civil than what we're doing for civil. And, and so we wouldn't really do that, but just with the constraints that we have on the budget, that's what's making it hard for us to be able to have that same parity. Because you will see where it was four and five and all of that before. It's just because of the declining revenues that's made it harder for us to propose and do that.
And please don't think I'm trying to debate you. That's definitely not the case. It's just, like even the logic on, well, if we raise this, that's gonna make everybody up. Okay, if you raise it, you're taking money away from everybody else. I don't understand that logic either. So, I mean, we could refute, I could refute it all day, but I just, I want to make sure that our non-civil service employees understand that like in an ideal world, I'm sure we would all agree to take care, better care of them. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, did you have something?
So I, I guess I had a question. Do you know off the top of your head what the average salary for a non-civil employee versus civil employee is?
I do not, no.
We can get that for you, though.
Yeah, we can get that information.
Before the end of the night, we, we should be able to get that, right?
Well, so like, have you got a slide thirty-five? Which I guess was the slide we're on before.
I'm sorry, what did you just ask?
Uh, um, the average salary for a civil employee, civil service protected employee versus non-civil.
I heard that. It was a part after I didn't get.
Oh, to, to go to slide thirty-five. Because I just want to make sure I'm doing the correct math. Okay, so if one point two million dollars is three percent.
One point six would be four percent? That's, that's what I, that's where I said I was gonna go.
Yeah, well, well, no, it's not even that. So, okay, so that's forty million dollars that we're spending on four hundred and sixty-one employees, which comes out to about just short of eighty-seven thousand dollars average salary. You do the same math, one point four million divided by four point seven five percent, which is the average of four and a half and five. Is, basically comes out to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per civil service protected employee. So all that to say, we're talking about how on a percentage basis, non-civil service employees are getting a smaller raise, but they're also getting a smaller raise of a smaller base salary. So every year, there's an even bigger disparity. So every year, there's an even bigger disparity, not only because of the percentage, but because of what that percentage is.
Gone through that up here. I, I don't like percent raises at all because the people at the higher rate get a much higher, bigger raise.
Right.
I, I fought this when I was on staff council at the university. We've talked about it here, we did something different for a year. There were some unintended consequences and so.
But I just want to bring attention to that. That not only, even putting them at an equal percentage increase doesn't necessarily also equate to equality.
But if three percent is 1.2 million, four percent would be 1.6, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's 400,000.
Which, if I remember correctly, I don't even remember this percent, this presentation or previous one, but one cent in tax rate increases roughly $800,000?
Yes, sir.
So essentially, we could fund that one percent increase for non-civil with just a half percent.
Half cent?
Half cent, uh, tax, property tax increase.
Yes, sir.
Or tell me again what we're using the available capacity of 485,000 for?
That was, uh, it was proposed to, uh, be used towards, um, it was one of the pieces that was going to pay for the equipment, um, the, so that we didn't have to issue debt. Yes, ma'am.
And we know what equipment we need to buy this year, I assume? Or acquire, however we end up paying for it?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's a, it's a fire engine and, um, we have, um, approximately 600 radios that, um,
I saw it, I saw it on the list and I'm, I'm sure there's more if there were more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I saw it.
I thought we purchased some new radios, uh, in the last year or so.
No, it's been longer.
Yes, we, we, we have a total of, of 600 and there are some of those that are reaching end of life. So we've worked with our provider, the Lower Colorado River Authority, L C R A. And, um, and we know which ones, um, won't be effective, um, by the end of next year. So we need to replace those.
Do we do a third every year?
Uh, we're, uh, we're going to do 25% a year, yes, ma'am, yes. So after four years, we'll, we'll have replaced them all.
But I thought we replaced them because they were not on the same frequency anymore, that they were on different ones.
Maybe. From, from a history perspective, I don't have that information, sir.
Okay.
No, you may, maybe remembering that new tower. That's going in the south of town. Remember that new tower, so the, all the new stuff out there can be covered by fire and police?
Yeah, well, some are in the trunk system and some were analog. And we went back and got them all up to date to, to the right stuff. I, I don't quite remember.
I think that's been a while ago.
Yeah, it's, we, the, when Chief Williams was here, we put in, uh, collectively, he and I entered a budget request. I believe it was 1.5 million over two years to replace all the radios. That was back in, I believe, 2012 to 2014. I also authored, Chief Coleman and I authored a grant, a AFG grant to replace a bunch of radios throughout Hayes County. Uh, the city was awarded 999,999 dollars through that grant for P-25 compliant handheld radios. Those were also around 2014, the last of which were received in 2016. So they're all approaching either 10 or 12 years of age, so they have aged out. This is the replacement of those across the city. It's a total of about, I think Mr. Locke said 600 radios over a three-year period, a third, a third and a third, um, for all city departments, not just the police department, not just the fire department, but these are used in utility departments, parks, others, departments. Uh, but they are at, at end of life. And this is a way to kind of lessen that by doing one-third each year. And then also, one of the things that Mr. Locke has brought to us is if we do them with bond funding, where I had initially submitted this request to, they would be financed over a 20-year period and the rate is actually higher for that. Mr. Locke's approach finances them for seven years or less at a lower rate, so we pay less in interest. It's a much more responsible approach. And so, uh, I, I applaud his efforts for bringing that to us. That's also the same shift he's offering to you on the fire apparatus. And I want to point out that fire apparatus he keeps mentioning is already ordered, council approved it. This is just how we're going to pay for it? So I don't, I don't want to talk about fires in the future.
But it takes a year and a half to get here, right?
It does, yes, ma'am, it does.
We have time to put the money aside.
But he's also, and, and I've actually taken what Mr. Locke has taught me and I've been teaching it across the state to others. Because again, seven-year debt, just like a car, if you finance it for 36 months, it's a lot less interest than 60 or 72 months. So he's really being conservative with his, his way of financing this and bringing better practices to our city.
Uh, one other question. When do you, what do you foresee on changing radios again? Let's say we're, we're going to buy the ones you're talking about, is it another year?
No, sir, if we, if we, once this is complete, you're back to about, they're about 10 years. The technology ages out in about 10 years. And what you start to run into is the availability of parts and we're seeing that currently. Or the radios reach end of life and the manufacturer no longer will work on them or will manufacture parts to support them. And then, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, one other thing you touched on was you remember purchasing some radios over the last couple of years because of the addition of Station 6, the blocker, and the fourth person on Truck 3 and Truck 5. Y'all did purchase a small number of radios for us just to grow ours to match the number of FTEs we have needing a radio. But that was a, a very small number, I believe it was 12 last year through the capital outlay program.
Well, thank you for.
Yes, sir.
That reminder.
The other thing, while Chief Stevens is up here, I do want to name that our, our chiefs and our assistant chiefs are all non-civil, so they are not part of the civil service, so just.
That is correct.
There's other staff in the departments who are non-civil also, right?
Correct.
In both organizations, just. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Um, we are not to July 25th yet.
Correct.
We've passed the April 25th, whatever that date is, uh, where the appraisal district gives us information. But it gets more definitive on, um, July 25th.
Absolutely, yeah.
So at this point, we don't know for sure which way that's going to go. Would it be fair to say that if it goes up and it looks like we have more money, depending on how much that is, that Ms. Reyes, we could look at assisting the non-civil service? Because what we've been doing is good. I hate to backtrack on that. Um, with, with all the work that you've done with the compensation study and adjustments and all of that, um, I don't want to backtrack.
Yeah, especially with the turnover rate being as low as it is and it continues to trend downwards. Like, clearly there's efficacy there.
Yeah.
So.
So, um.
Yes, ma'am, that's definitely, if the council is, is fine with that, we would, we would definitely, um.
Are y'all all good with that?
Be okay with that.
If the numbers come in such that there's, there's more money that it's, it goes first
Yes.
to getting the four percent?
I'm fine with it, I always wanted to have them pretty much the same, but yes, I'm fine with it.
And the, I mean, if it's three and a quarter, three and a half, you know, you get five to three. It's, I think everyone's saying that that's, that's good? Okay, so we have that. Let's see, I need, no, I've got everybody. Okay. Okay, so, item three. Uh, use fund balance that we have that's in excess of the 25% that we don't touch. That's a savings account we leave alone, uh, through, I guess, a lot of salary savings and whatever. Uh, that number looks like it's going to be $3 million this year. How do we, um, lay it out? We've been putting, is it a million in City Hall every year?
It's, it's usually been more than a million dollars the past couple of years.
One and a half somewhere, okay. Uh, and then we've got the capital outlay and the cash fund equipment replacement, as was noted in previous slides. I need to know if y'all are okay with that or have comments. Um, that one, Mr. Mendoza, I'll go to you first this time.
Uh, I'm okay with the fund balance there.
The excess fund balance, but, okay, Mr. Scott? Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. I'll go over here, Ms. Garza?
I'm not going to answer one way or another because, uh, I don't, I'm not super passionate about it going to these things, but I also don't have current proposals for somewhere else I could go.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Saul Gonzalez?
Oh, I'm, I'm okay with it, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Rodriguez?
Um, duh, 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 duh. Well, given, if I answer this right now and then it comes for, when, when is it, August 19th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if my colleagues have other ideas on how to appropriate this money, that's still plausible, right? Okay, so we can still workshop this part? Okay, okay. Um, then for now, I actually will probably abstain and just to see if, my mind is still racing on if these are the things, to, to Ms. Garza's point, if, if these are still the things that I, I would like it to go through. I'm not necessarily an opponent, but, you know, just more time to workshop this money.
The only thing that I would, that I would ask for consideration is if you are going to do anything with any of it, that we at least try to keep the capital outlay, and funding the equipment replacement, only because those are, those are the equipment things that we need for people to do their jobs. And then also the 0.5 million is to help us so that we can build capacity back into the budget for FY '27. So I wouldn't want us to spend that and then not be able to have that capacity that we're hoping to build, build back into '27 by cash funding and not having to issue debt for things. So that, those, that's the only thing that I'm, uh, just going to ask for y'all to consider, if, if you wouldn't mind that.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. Um, I just, yeah, uh, definitely understood and, um, if I have any questions, I'll, you know, ask them to y'all.
It would be helpful to me if you could point me to where in all the different budget documents or if, if it doesn't exist, like, there's more drilled down compelling justification for each of these things so that when I have to engage with my constituents about it, I can share y'all's rationale in a more accurate way.
We can, we can submit to you the 1.8 million in capital outlay requests because those have the justifications for why they're asking for them. So we can definitely submit those to y'all. And then what happens is, is if you say you're going to allocate, we have 1.8 in million in requests. Where, if we only are asking, um, to get 1.5, there's still going to be $300,000 in requests that aren't going to be granted. So the things that we provide here is going to be the full list, but we haven't gotten together as a team to prioritize which of those things are going to go as part of the 1.5 yet. So just want to name that as well. So what y'all will get was the full list, not the prioritized, it'll be the full 1.8.
I would appreciate that because it's hard for me when people ask, okay, so why from this money and not somewhere else? Or why, you know what I mean? It's like, because there's so many different other situations where some staff have done a good job at bringing in like grant money or, you know, and so being able to explain to my constituents, like, this has to come from here because, you know what I mean?
It's one-time money.
Yeah.
It's one-time money, it can't be reoccurring, so we can't program it, um, you know, year after year. It's got to be something that we only have the money to buy one time and, and that's what it's used for.
It's, it's tidbits like that, I feel like helps people like not get it twisted, like, uh, you know, we can't fund A, B, C, D, E, F, G with this, you know what I mean?
Correct.
Um, that would be helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, on to item four, proposed fee adjustments. Um, I think we've already agreed that the special events might take some fine tuning yet. However, I don't think, however those dollars end up is going to make a significant change to our, our budget. So we've got time on that. But the planning and development fees and the sidewalk fee and lieu, that was those last pages with the really small print, um, of your packet. So, uh, I think this is a yes, no, or give us some comments also. Um, Mr. Scott, I'll start with you this time. Uh, it's item four, include the proposed fee adjustments?
Special events? Oh, that 35, 85, um.
That, and then the planning and development fees, which was the long list in the small print, and the sidewalk fee and lieu. That was in the packet, I forget the number.
I guess it's necessary.
Okay, so you're a yes. Uh, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Uh, yes.
Um, Mr. Mendoza?
I'm a yes.
Okay, I'll go to the other side over here, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Garza?
Yes, with the understanding that we're going to, like, keep our eye on the situation and then continue the, the vibe of, uh,
Special events.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then there's item five, other direction for staff. We already covered that one, for, for our staff to look at that percent increase every year with a hard look every third year, like we've been doing? Um, see where that lands? And if, and if y'all have, and, and if you find out something that that's not a good idea, just let us know or, or, you know, record why we didn't, why we didn't follow that policy
Yes, ma'am.
um, for a particular year. There may be a good reason why not to in one particular area, but the default would be for those fees to, to go up. Anything else for the general fund? Cause folks, we only halfway through here. Anything else? Seeing none? We will continue with other governmental operating funds. Uh, please continue, Mr. Locke.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first one is the hotel tax fund. And this first slide, uh, provides the actuals for fiscal year '24, that what the fiscal year '25 budget is and where we think we're going to finish fiscal year '25. So fiscal year '25, um, we're estimating that we're going to use less fund balance, as you can see, than, than what we originally budgeted. Um, so we'll finish with a fund balance of 4.1 million dollars instead of roughly $3 million. So, uh, looking at fiscal year '26, the total revenues are, um, will go up. And that is from the Embassy Suite remodel being completed by the time we get there. So we'll, we'll be able to, uh, we should see additional hotel tax revenue coming in. And the total proposed expenses are higher than revenues and that is due to, uh, one-time expenses. And we'll have a slide that details what those one-time expenses are coming up. Uh, where we will finish is a 3.3 million dollar ending fund balance. So the fund balance requirement for this fund is 25%. It's 1.1 million and we will be at 3.3 million, um, estimated by the end of the fiscal year '26. This is a.
Mr. Locke, real quick.
Yes.
Before we move on, um, I know we just got off the general fund, but one thing I did want to mention to mayor and council that I think will be just helpful, um, is because we just got back from the Texas City Management Conference. And one of the things that was also discussed at the legislative wrap-up was just some of the legislation that is, that was contemplated this last fiscal, uh, this last legislative session to where even, uh, taxing entities won't even be able to increase their rates um, above the no new revenue rate without, uh, uh, an election. So that's something that I just wanted to mention and name, um, that that is something that is being pushed for at the legislative level. So we would be getting ahead of that, um, by at least trying to go to the no new revenue rate before we're not able to do that. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. They, they postponed it to happen some when they're going to take up in next year. Our next legislative session to discuss, um, how to put those expenditure caps and things like that on cities. So.
Yeah, a lot of the things that didn't pass, they weren't voted down, they just didn't make it through the process in time, so. Well, sometimes people work the system too, not saying that doesn't happen, but, anyway. But, but there are a lot of them, they, they just didn't make it out of the chute.
So, Ms. Reyes, so you're essentially saying that the proposal is to get rid of the voter approval rate and essentially anything above the no new revenue would require voter approval?
So, no new revenue would be the voter approval rate?
Correct. It would, it would trigger anything above the no new revenue rate?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Happy day.
Yeah. Okay, uh, this slide shows what hotel tax revenue, the annual change has been in hotel tax revenue over the past few years. Um, you can see in 2020 where, um, within each column, it shows the percent change. And that obviously was the impact of COVID. And then you can see the growth as we grew, um, outside of post-COVID. Really what I wanted to show, um, on this slide is that the estimated increase in fiscal year '26 is 5%. And that's three and a half million dollars. When you look back, um, that three and a half million dollars is still less. When you look back, that three and a half million dollars is still less than what the actuals that we brought in in fiscal year twenty-two, three point six. So it's, even though it's a five percent increase, it's still a conservative estimate. The reason that it is a five percent is the impact of the Embassy Suite remodel this year. As you can see, from twenty-four to twenty-five, the estimate is going down, and that's from the Embassy Suite remodel. That's scheduled to finish up next month in July.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know how many of the room nights at the embassy are conference and how many are not? Can they give us that number?
We can get it, yes, ma'am, but I...
Y'all interested in that number?
Sure.
If it's easy to get, if we could just ask them, they can just, they know it, that would be great. I don't want anybody spending a lot of time on it.
Okay. This is how the hotel tax revenues are divided. The majority of it comes from the seven percent hotel tax, it makes up seventy-three percent. And as just touched on, there's an assumed increase of five percent growth in that revenue base. The other two percent is from the conference center. Is, the other is, is from the two percent tax, which is for the venue tax for the conference center. And that makes up twenty-one percent of the revenue. All the rest of the revenue includes things as interest revenue, as well as the transfer in from the general fund to cover some Main Street expenses that aren't allowable for hotel tax revenue.
Mr. Locke, real quick, just a reminder, because I forgot. Regarding the conference center, remind me when we're supposed to meet our obligations for that? Within like the next year?
Yes, ma'am, so within the, we're planning to do a defeasance to where within the next two years, we will have that conference center paid off.
Thank you. Happy day.
Yes. These are the major expense increases in the hotel tax fund. The three percent increase in the hotel tax fund is thirty-nine thousand dollars. There, there is a new, two new positions being added at a cost of a hundred and eighty-two thousand. There's an arts, culture, and heritage manager, a hundred and forty-four thousand. And the other half FTE for that code compliance officer that we talked about in the general fund, general fund's paying a half. The other half is here in the hotel tax fund, is thirty-eight thousand. On the operating side, signature events are a hundred thousand dollars, and there's some new software as well. Those big one-time expenses that I mentioned on that first fund summary slide, those are wayfinding for five hundred thousand, and then the heritage preservation grant funding is three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Is the wayfinding replacing the signs that we have now or adding more of the same in different locations?
My understanding is it's replacing what we have now.
We've got several that, yeah, okay, need it. And this heritage preservation grant funding, that's new, correct? Or this is the second year?
This is the, this is the amount that, that y'all asked for, so yes. So the proposal is to have the arts, culture, and heritage manager that can then be able, and they wanna reclass a position to be able to do that.
And they'll be working with our historic preservation officer and others?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Oh. On the wayfinding, are we going to wait until we have our new branding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, so that, that's the goal, is to make it look more comprehensive and cohesive with the new branding. The branding efforts are underway, and it's also something where they're gonna even look at the Visit St. Marcus brand so that those are complementary and work together and, and it's more holistic. We're gonna put the river on it, right?
So...
That remains to be seen.
So no more backdoor branding. We're gonna go back and fix it.
That, that is the goal, is, is... And, and it's, and it's not always, I, I will say that, I mean, it's, it's a point of contention with some of our, our team members just because sometimes they have different identities, but we are trying to get something that looks like one cohesive brand for St. Marcus.
Let me ask this, ma'am. I have a question. So the one forty-four, or the one hundred and forty-four K is for the, is the new position or is it one? And what exactly do they do for that kind of money?
So, Mr. Gonzalez, you wanna take this one?
Rodney Gonzalez, Assistant City Manager. So in cultural, in their destination services department, we currently have that program, arts, culture, and heritage manager, or arts with just one person. But we know that because of the different grants that we have in arts, we could use another person and tease that out separately to fully support our arts community. And so what they would do, of course, is they would run our grant programs specific to our arts. We have many of those and we have many applicants.
They're actually writing the grants?
No, they're, they're running the grants program, so they receive the app... Exactly, they receive the applications from our, from our nonprofit arts agencies. They process those and then, of course, they work with the committee to determine who is eligible and who receives those. And then, of course, they distribute the grants, but doesn't stop there because we do require reporting for each of the grants. And so those reports come in oftentimes on a quarterly basis that the individuals review. So that's kinda like on the grants side of it.
But they're doing that now. Somebody's doing that now, correct?
We have one person doing that right now, and what we find is that we have the need for more staff because of the number of nonprofits that are applying for grants and just the breadth of the work that's being done.
But the hundred and forty-four includes benefits and a whole bunch of other stuff, correct?
That's what I was just gonna say.
That's not your salary.
Right, it includes salary and benefits. And then also, when we go to slides seventy and seventy-one, there'll be a little bit more information too that'll help kind of...
I'm just kinda curious what they do.
Yeah.
Yes. And then, of course, we have the programming side. So aside from the granting agency, then we have the programming side, which, of course, again, supports our arts community. These are programs that we initiate to help with the arts community and just help St. Marcus as an arts community.
Yeah, next slide's gonna tell us a lot more.
Thank you.
So the next couple of slides will explain how the heritage preservation grant funding will work. There'll be a guidelines and policy committee composed of the historic preservation officer, the community engagement coordinator, public works assistant director, and destination services. There'll be two grant options that will support heritage preservation efforts. The first, programs and events marketing, and that's designed to support initiatives that promote heritage through programs, events, and marketing efforts. And the second is for capital projects, and those will focus on physical improvements and restoration work on historic properties.
Sorry, that made us... So regarding the capital projects, because I know we also use CDBG money for similar projects, right? So this would be in addition or they would be processing the CDBG?
This would be in, in addition. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
So the, the plan, the guidelines, and the policy are, should be finalized by midsummer of this year?
By who?
I'm sorry?
Who's gonna be doing that?
Destination Services, Rebecca Ibarra and her, and her team.
Destination Services or more CVB specifically?
Yes, more CVB specifically.
And, but the applicants must meet the two-part test in Texas Task Code Chapter three, four, fifty-one. And that is that, the first is that every expenditure must directly enhance and promote the tourism convention and hotel industry. And the second is that every expenditure must fit into one of the statutorily stated categories. And so examples of those are promotion of the arts, historical restoration and preservation, advertising and promotion, and the convention and visitors information centers. So there's, I think there's about nine different categories that it can fit into.
In other words, we're gonna stay legal with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Always a good thing.
I appreciate the question regarding the policy, though, because I was just, the reason being is... Like, if one organization gets funded one year, is there, and I know you've probably, you may not even be able to answer this, so it's okay to, to say no. But is there sort of gonna be an equitable approach to make sure it's new organizations year after year? Or, you know, because some people are privy of these, these funds, and many who may benefit from them are not. And so just to ensure diversification on who actually gets the appropriated funds.
Councilmember, I'll take that question. So the plan has not yet been developed, but of course, the plan will come back to council where the policy will come back to council for approval. So of course, if there's consensus among council to offer some direction with how that policy is shaped, we certainly will take that. Right now, we are drafting that policy, and it is gonna come back to council, as that last bullet points out in September of this year.
Okay.
So what have we been doing for the last thirty years?
For, this is the new program that we're talking about, the heritage preservation program, where we have new money assigned from hotel occupancy tax for this purpose, and so this...
But we, right now, we have been assigning money to applicants for different arts and for this and for that. We've been doing a lot of that for a long time.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, and there are policies and programs for those programs. This is a new one, and we're drafting up the policy for this one.
I suspect it won't be a lot different, but, okay.
We'll see. It'll, it should be pretty similar, mayor, but of course, as Mr. Gonzalez said, we're, we're definitely open to any direction that you wanna provide in terms of how you would like to see that operate.
Yep. Sounds good.
I guess I, I'm still like confused, so like, mayor said, like, what have y'all been doing the last thirty years? So like, there's existing stuff, this is like something new, right? Can, can you give me like an example of like what type of pro, like, like, help me envision? Like, what do other, I guess, cities, like, what type of programs are, is funded by stuff like this?
What would qualify?
Sure, I'll, I'll give you our example, of course. So like, we have our signature events, for instance, like we have coming up right now, one right now in November, the airshow. So theirs is more of an event, and it's not necessarily the capital projects that we're talking about. With this fund, in particular, with this programming, we're talking about capital projects in particular that could be physical improvements to a heritage facility. It could be a city-owned facility that we have, or it could be another type of facility. But that's a distinction that we're talking about with regard to this program, is that we have, we can use the money for capital projects as well.
And three hundred and seventy-five thousand is the dollar amount that's gonna, available to be assigned to whoever, whoever wins the application contest?
Well, we haven't, we, we haven't assigned that policy yet to say it's like three hundred and seventy-five thousand for one application. I believe that's in total, the amount that we have.
That's the total amount available.
It says heritage preservation grant funding.
Correct.
Yes. And I think what you had mentioned was potentially that that would be for one applicant, and we haven't defined that.
No, I didn't say it would be for one.
Okay. It's for the whole program?
Yes.
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 It could be fifty dol, fifty thousand, you know, there's gonna be different qualifications.
That's what I, I said, I didn't mean to imply there would be just one. When I said whoever wins, that could be twelve, yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
We're on the same page.
Yeah, I guess my, my concerns with this has always been like, I, because I can't imagine it because I don't have a lot of examples on like how you meet both the two grant options and the two-part test. Like, it's, it seems kind of backwards to me for us to like support this theoretically without having like a more drilled down policy. Does that make sense? And I get that, like, you can bring back the policy and like have us unpack it. It's just, it, the, it's an interesting trajectory, like timeline of it all. Does that make sense? Like, it feels weird to be like, yeah, that sounds dope when I have, I still have so many questions, so my, yeah.
Yes, we're asking, because y'all already approved the funding, and so really, this was us just giving y'all kind of an update because if you'll recall, last year...
I remember.
It was something that, that we hadn't come up with a program, and so now we're working towards developing that program. And so we're just giving you an update and a timeline. So this one, this next slide does show, you know, kind of the application process and then like some of the capital project grants that could be looked at. So like the Price Center, the Calabos Museum, the Commemorative Air Force Museum. Again, those are things that we know that are in need of, of repair, and those would qualify because they would meet the two-part test, and they also would, would make sure that they would...
Dunbar Building?
Yes, Dunbar Building. Any of those would be things that could qualify in the way that we're thinking about the policy right now. But of course, these are just examples. Mayor and council, y'all can decide if you want something different other than what we bring you.
Is this the result of me throwing my fed about we need more money for historic things and there's money in this hotel tax fund? So let's use it because there's a lot of money there that we weren't using?
Yes, yes, that's what this is.
Oh, thanks for the content.
Yeah.
And thank you for explaining that these are examples, because when I first saw the slide, I was like, wait, what's the point of the grant process if we've already put the recipients?
No.
Okay.
No, those, those are just examples, just because y'all have been asked at different times to help fund some of these organizations for different repairs.
And I just, it's important to name, there has been beef on, on the, the way that past councils have given direction to fund who, what, when, and where, and why. And so that's why things like this make me very uncomfortable, not knowing, like, drilled down details because I wanna be able to tell our neighbors, like, no, like, we, we're gonna have a game plan, you know, pinky promise, like, when, like, there's gonna be a policy that's drafted eventually, so I appreciate the update.
The museum funding that we've been doing for a long time, could it qualify for that pot of money? Because I know restrictions on hotel occupancy tax by law.
I was, I was gonna say, and once again, we haven't drafted the policy to, to fully tell you whether or not they qualify or don't qualify. So, you know, if...
This is the hundred thousand we already do.
Exactly, and you were asking about the, the individual museums, whether or not they would qualify for this program?
This, this is the, like, we got an example from somebody who asked us in, that gets museum funding currently and said, hey, we haven't gotten an increase, can we get an increase? And we were gonna look to see if any of these, this money could be available to help with some of the needs versus it being just an increase in the funding. You're, you're asking about the same question?
Yes, and for council's awareness, that funding that goes to museums comes from the general fund. And so that money, of course, we don't have excess revenue to assign.
I'm trying to free up some money in the general fund by finding another source, if it's a legit source.
Exactly, and, and because we haven't drafted the, the policy of this program just yet, I can't tell you whether or not they would qualify or not qualify. I mean, it just depends on what their expenses are that they, that might be freed up from this funding source and whether they would align or not with this. And again, because we are talking about capital projects, which are more of like one-time versus the ongoing operational expenses, which were presented to us as a challenge. So that, so that's a distinction.
But having this option may, may, may help.
It may help offset some...
Any, any option helps out right now for whether one-time expenses or, or something else.
But anything we can free up from the general fund is helpful.
Yes.
So, last question on the policy, I promise. So it says the finalization should happen summer twenty-twenty-five, so like maybe July, early August? I guess I'm trying to figure out when this is coming back, mainly because I, I saw the application process begins October of this year.
Yes, yes, and so I can tell you for sure it's gonna be before September, before it gets to council. And so we anticipate August at the latest. And then we would bring it to council in September, and then we'd be ready to rock and roll come October.
Great, okay, I just wanted to know how much time we had to review, so thank you.
If, if we're ready, I can move on and...
Go ahead.
That's the last slide for hotel tax.
Okay, what I would like to do while we're still fresh on our brain is to go to the decision points for this and then come back to Community Enhancement Fund, because under the special revenue decision points, it's talking about hotel tax revenues. Yes, that slide. So we're just, we're gonna finish up hotel tax. So council, this is the decision point on this one is to budget at an increase of five percent, which is what they had put on the slide. And that reflects their remodel and noting that the budgeted revenue is still lower than the FY twenty-two titles. So are y'all good at the increase of five percent? This is a yes or no, comments are fine. Mr. Scott? He's saying yes. Anybody else?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mendoza's a yes. I'll finish out this side, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll go to the other side. Mr. Gonzalez? Saul Gonzalez, okay. Ms. Rodriguez?
Sorry to mess with the yes train. So when we say increase in...
Sorry to mess with the yes train. Um, so when we say increase in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, revenues reflect Embassy Suites remodel completion, is the, are their rates changing? I guess, help me understand how the remodel is going to be tied to potential increases in revenue?
I, yes, ma'am, to answer your question, I do believe the rates are changing.
Okay.
And what this is more based on is the fact that during the remodel, they had different sections of the hotel closed down, so, and they weren't even, um, holding some of the conventions that they were going to hold, that they would otherwise hold. So, um, because of that, we would just generate more revenue, because this could be open all year round.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we, we lost money last year because of the closure.
I definitely got that part, I just wanted to see if there was any changes in rates that we were expecting as well.
My understanding is that there is a change in rates, and we can check and follow up, uh, for sure, but that's my understanding.
When you ask him that other question.
Okay, um, yes, my answer's yes.
Okay, Ms. Garza? And I'm a yes. So that takes care of that one, and we'll go back to Community Enhancement Fee. Thank you.
I think that's the first slide, yes.
Yeah.
So this is the Community Enhancement Fund overview, so for fiscal year twenty-five, we are going to bring in, um, more revenue than what was budgeted, and, um, expenses are, it's good, it shows that expenses are more than what the budget is. This is the adopted budget, not the amended budget. The difference being that one time there, the two hundred thousand dollars, their budget was amended to allow two hundred thousand dollars for the demolition of unsafe structures. And, um, so that's the reason that it shows that, um, we would spend more money than what we brought in. Um, that money isn't necessarily all going to be used during this current fiscal year, though. For fiscal year twenty-six, the total revenues are estimated at one point three million, and the total expenses are at nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. So you can see that the expenses are going down, um, if you compare the personnel in twenty-six to the personnel in twenty-four, that is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars decrease, and that is just from moving those two code compliance officers from Community Enhancement and, and to the general fund. So the, we're estimating to finish with the fund balance of, uh, just over a million dollars. The fund balance policy for this fund requires two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Okay.
These are the revenues and cost drivers in the Community Enhancement Fund. The revenues come from the Community Enhancement Fee, there's no increase. The, the growth that you, the increase you see there is just from growth of accounts. On the cost drivers, the overall, um, personnel decreased eighty-eight thousand dollars. That was from moving that second code compliance officer out. And the three percent increase in personal costs in this, in this fund is twelve thousand. On the operating side, this is, um, the, the slide says July for mowing services. Um, that, that will actually be spring of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So this is what's not included in the budget. It's a budget supplemental request for Community Enhancement, uh, for positions for three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And that takes us to the decision point, so unless there was other direction for staff on the Community Enhancement Fund, that-
Uh, anything on, Mr. Gonzalez?
I have one, on the demolition part. How many homes did y'all get to demolition this year and last year? Do you have a count?
And were they all homes, or were they other types of structures?
Greg Card, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement, I don't have the direct number. Um, this past year, we've done more, um, Ruby's been working on that, identifying and getting some people to tear it down themselves, and then identifying those that we need to tear down. When we changed funds, because we used to be under the general fund and we went to special revenue, um, we had two hundred thousand, and that's why we had to bring that two hundred thousand, so we have money to do a demolition when we need to.
On demolition, the project, are we looking ten, twelve, twenty thousand dollars, or?
They're roughly around ten thousand.
Okay, uh, and all that money, we got quite a bit left over then, correct?
Yes, well, we have the two hundred thousand now to start with, that, we made that budget adjustment. And then we'll draw down on that.
Right, but y'all try to encourage the homeowner to do it themselves, and for some reason they cannot. Y'all go ahead and get that demo.
Yes, and part of the issue too is just establishing our, uh, processes for those that we can't find, or they don't want to do it. Um, on how legally we'd go about that process fairly for everybody.
Do we put a lien on the property?
Yes.
That's, I guess, that's a way to, uh, get our, some of our money back.
Yeah, it's not quick, but we do get it back, yes.
Right.
Yeah, because it's improving the property and saving somebody else that money, so.
But regardless, you need their consent to demolish the property, right, or?
Sure.
We can do a forced demolition, and that's the process.
If the owner doesn't consent, we, we do go to court, and then we get an order. So we can't do any of that without some sort of due process and a, a judge's, uh, signing off on it.
And more of that is in the, uh, we just don't know where the owner is, we can't find the owner. Um, and so then we get the legal way to go in and take it down. We've been really fortunate on, if we know the owner, getting, helping them out. Even if we just get consent, we may pay for it and then get the money back later, because it's about the neighbors and what they have to put up with at that property.
And I, I can understand that. Okay, that's not any questions I had, thank you.
Uh, I have a question, whenever we do the demolition, is it a wrecking ball and it all goes to the landfill? Or are we contracting with people who will come, because they're looking for real two-by-fours that are two-by-four, and are willing to do some of that demolition in order for the materials, so that those materials get reused?
Well, you all know Amy, so you know what the answer to that is.
I know, I'm, I'm looking for confirmation.
No, and it's, and it's not just the, the materials, the wood and stuff. Um, because usually it's not just the structure, there'll be some, you know, maybe some junk cars or some washers and dryers. So we look for the metal, and we always take the metal, and we'll get Green Guy to come in. And actually, Green Guy has done some of the demos for us, and so if it's ten thousand dollars they take out up, we will credit you two thousand for the recycled materials that we do it, so then it's eight thousand. So that's good too, or we do look for that in other contractors, that they don't just haul it off to the landfill.
Yeah, especially if it's an old enough structure and the wood's still good.
And it's a good market for that, too.
Okay.
Question?
Yes ma'am.
Um, so regarding the demolitions where we, uh, don't have, you know, someone's consent, is that something we frequently do?
No.
No? Um, do we have, like, like, I guess how, how, when's the last time we did that?
We have not done one since I've been here.
Okay.
Um, because we didn't have the process, and now we have the process. And like you say, for the most part, it's not gonna be, we know where you are and we're just gonna tear your house. We don't know the, you know, maybe somebody's deceased, we can't find who owns the property, and until that happens, we need to tear, tear it down. But yes, last resort would be a forced demolition with a person we know.
Didn't y'all do one on Railroad Street here in the last couple of years?
Yes, but we did get, uh, consent on that one.
From all of the owners?
She was actually incarcerated, but we got consent. Um, and that was because there was, um, a fire from drugs and stuff from, because she couldn't take care of the property.
Well, first it didn't get con- uh, condemned until there were some complaints, and then it, it got condemned. Uh, the reason I'm asking this is the owner asked, told me one day that he never signed anything, one of the owners, for it to get, uh, demolished.
But that's something that y'all can talk about outside of our budget.
Oh, okay.
Just give an example.
Yeah, that one was, um, that was a, actually a court ordered, because it was a fire and half of the house was, um, burnt, and we had them still trying to occupy it.
Right, and, and I can, I can understand that, it's just-
Y'all, y'all can talk about that another time. I don't want to get too much into people's business here at council meeting.
I mean, for, for sure, but I think, you know, as somebody who heard that we have a demolition policy that can, that does not require consent, I think it just, for me-
Talk about that policy, yes, yes, yes.
For me, that's why I felt it was necessary to an- ask that question, given that I recently even attended the Preservation Texas at the LBJ Museum, and they were just talking about how different properties in different neighborhoods are perceived differently as far as value and the value to preserve them. And so I just, if, I was trying to see, number one, if it was something we frequently do, which it sounds like it's not, and then if it was, you know, getting data behind where those, those homes were, but-
Yeah, everything we've done has been a, a life, health, safety issue. Somebody was gonna get hurt, transits living in the building, or somebody else around the building was gonna fall on them, potentially hurt or kill them.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
And it, it is important to note too that we, it's a last resort. We typically will secure a structure if possible before ever demolishing as well, that's the other thing.
Okay.
And that's actually set out in our ordinances.
Okay.
We have to kind of escalate, follow a certain series of steps, depending on the severity of this, the deterioration.
Thank you for the questions, Councilman Gonzalez. I feel like when we're making decisions, especially talking about funding more neighborhood enhancement, or like more positions that are, uh, adjacent to things like that, I think it's important that our neighbors see that we're meaningfully contemplating like all the things that they do as well, so.
I learned a lot.
Anything else on this topic? Mr. Locke, does this include, conclude special revenue?
Yes ma'am.
And we're on to enterprise?
Yes ma'am.
Then we're gonna take a break.
Okay.
Uh, council, it is eight forty-two, you would be back at eight fifty-two, please. Back at eight fifty-five, and we will now continue on with enterprise, more other major operating funds enterprise. I love that.
And I will begin the, this section of the presentation by, uh, what we, with what we heard from council. Begin with continue the incremental rate increase approach when rate increases are required. Do not include late penalties and rate models or the budget, and, and that has been done. All of the utility fund budgets, uh, do not include late penalties, and the models do not include late penalties either. Provide easier access and quicker turnaround for residents in need of utility payment assistance, and that has also been done. We've increased, uh, agency agreements from one to four, and I wanted to just, uh, share, um, how the numbers of people that, um, have went to see these agencies since they've been in place. From October through April, there were sixty-one different individuals that received utility payment assistance. And all of these agreements with the, with the other three came effect in May. And in May and June, there were one hundred and twenty-eight. So in total, there was a hundred and eighty-nine pledges in the first nine months of this fiscal year, and a hundred and twenty-eight of those occurred in the last two months. And that is, um, just by having, um, these other agencies that are getting the word out, and, um, also making it easier for people to get the help that they need.
Told you so. You knew that was coming, okay.
Yes.
Oh, um, I know the QAB met this week or la- last week, thank you. Um, do y'all have, was it anybody present to kind of give us?
Uh, they, they are showing the process, um, this was just the updated version of what they were looking for. Next meeting, they are going to be nuts and bolts, they're gonna get into this, fees, and the whole direction. That, that's almost hoping that, my colleagues, we keep that in mind. Um, this is just a general overview for them, they are gonna get into more details, uh, with this, but this is just a really good guideline for them to, to follow through, so.
Okay.
Um, they were very active, um, these are some very diverse individuals that are on this board, and, and their main concern is to not overcharge individuals and not be reckless with our spending. They did mention, um, the fund that we have for assistance, and talking about how they can use that in a more effective way. Um, there's several, it's a large fund in there, that they want to ensure that, um, they're distributing out correctly for those in need. But the problem they ran into was a lot of individuals are going to community impact first and things like that, so by the time they get to-
Community action, not community impact.
Thank you, uh, community action, then, um, by the time it gets to our utility program, they're not in need any further. So that's kind of why they were looking at other options to include that funding for visibility.
However-
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Where community action was getting their funding from the state, that quarter million dollars?
It's going away?
I think it was federal, and I think it may have gone away.
At this board knows.
And remind me, are those meetings recorded, the QAB meetings?
I, I don't believe so. They are?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're one of our boards and commissions, so.
Last time we talked about turnaround time to hook them up. What is actually the turnaround time now to restore their, their power if it's been turned off?
To restore power once it's been turned off?
Let's say someone needs assistance and, uh, their debt line came, and it came and went, and they turned the power off. And then they find out about all these programs, what is the turnaround time from those agencies to help them out?
Okay, um, I will actually need to ask, uh, Christine Avalos to come up and answer that question. She's the Utility Billing Manager, and, and she, she's, uh, better positioned to address it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm gonna put this down, because I'm short. Okay, so are you talking about when a pledge is submitted to us for utility assistance?
Right.
Okay, so we will turn those pledges around within twenty-four hours.
Okay.
And so once we get that, we will put it on the account. If the customer's been disconnected, we'll re, we'll get them reconnected, and it's that same day, as long as the order is in, by five o'clock, it'll be reconnected that same day.
Okay, uh, they're gonna be also charged the reconnection fee?
Yes.
Yeah, this was, uh, not exactly what you're asking, but this was a question I put in the message board, given that council recently had a tour, um, to our Public Works Department. Um, and I was sort of asking like, you know, because we have heard some, some concerns, and I imagine the history of this council, y'all probably had these discussions before. Um, but I had some concerns around like a disconnection, and when somebody makes a payment, is it happening automatically? Or, um, and so if you want to check out the message board too, I, but, um, y'all had messa- or mentioned in that response that, uh, what we can do verbatim, what we can do is look into the possibility of removing the need for delinquent accounts to pay with a representative in order to facilitate a reconnect. Um, is, and the reason, and I, I mentioned this in my question, uh, in the fourth, uh, in the message board, because I was really trying to determine if this needs to be addressed via the budget. Um, and if it's a tech, if it's a technology thing, do we have an idea how much that might, may cost, um, what we're talking about here?
We do not right now, and this is gonna be a collaboration between utility billing and utilities, because it, the payments come in through utility billing. Our CSR takes the phone call, takes a payment, dispatches it to utilities, and then that CSR has to dispatch it, whether it's a remote, uh, reconnection for electric. Those are, I think we're at a hundred percent, AMI Tyler, is that correct? And then water, we are not. So then if, if it's a dispatch for water, then that technician has to actually go out into the field and reconnect. So as far as an automation reconnection, if a customer makes the payment for kind of a side conversation that we're having, you know, we can push a button and then it'll just go all the way through and, and reconnect them. I mean, I think that's still gonna take us a little bit of time to get there. Now, we are working on our, um, going from Customer Connect Six, our customer payment portal, to Silver Blaze, and we are working with Harris, um, to see as far as payments coming in and taking that automation of where the payment automatically posts to the account. But there's still some work that has to be done between us and utilities to be able to have that service for customers.
Then we're at a hundred percent now on the software, we can hook, turn it on?
For electric.
Electric, wow, congratulations, that's great.
Okay, yeah, I, the, the whole purpose is just to make sure that if somebody makes a payment, they're not just sitting there for hours on end or days. I don't know what the average time is right now on how long people wait to- they're not just sitting there for hours on end or days. I don't know what the average time is right now on how long people wait to reconnect. I'd be interested to see that. But if there is something that we need to do this budget cycle, I would be interested to see how much that would cost to maybe alleviate some of the concerns that have been presented before.
Okay, okay. And my understanding is, that was one of the things that we are doing, is we are going ahead and increasing, um, the software costs so that we can upgrade to that Silver Blaze that you're talking about. There's also other things that we want to accomplish with Silver Blaze, such as some of the notifications that council's talked about, when there's abnormal usage and things like that, and a more real-time basis, so. So we're behind the times when it comes to the system that we're using, and so that is something we know needs to happen. And so we've already put that in to the budget in terms of trying to upgrade that. So that will help with some of these concerns. It's gonna take some time, though, to implement it and all that kind of thing, but we are moving towards that and understand there's a need.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, we in fact are, so that, that brings me comfort. Thank you to my colleague for the question.
So I have a question, piggybacking off of Ms. Rodriguez's questions right now. So if I'm understanding the process correctly, once someone pays and needs to get reconnected, they pay with your CSR, your CSR then transfers a request to utilities CSR, um, and then they, since it's a, uh, for electric specifically, since it's a remote reconnect, they're essentially going into a system or something and actually turning it back on. So, and sorry, this is like an oversimplification, but could we not just solve that issue by giving your CSR's access to that system? To where, as soon as they process the payment, they can then just go in and reconnect them? Rather than having to direct it to someone else to then push that button?
That could possibly happen. I, I believe that that was previously discussed in then, in previous years, but we haven't gone that far yet. Now, as far as a remote reconnection, yes, the, I don't know that side as far as with, with the CSR, when they put that in from the utility side. But if that fails, then they still have to dispatch a technician.
Oh, it, it's just a thought that popped into my head. I'm like, it's literally, you're taking a payment, and then you're telling someone else to push the button. Why couldn't your people just push the button, but?
We've, we've discussed this, I think, one night, for how long, two hours?
Well, I don't wanna spend two hours on that, so. I, I'll move on.
Thank you.
And we're still where we are, we're at the end of that discussion.
But I, I feel like those are things that our neighbors routinely ask us, like, can you guys just make it more efficient or make it make sense? So this is one of those situations where it would be helpful to have a write-up, right? Like, I know we've talked about this, but it's like even, I'm not gonna, I'm, I do not have the capacity to go back every single meeting and go synthesize something that is not my area of expertise. So these are those, like, situations where it would be helpful. And I think I, I asked for something, and I got something, like, uh, like, uh, I think it was specifically about the, the, what is it? Support, like the assistance?
We did send a comprehensive memo that has that, and then we also included, and we can print it out in, from the message board, with Amanda's, Ms. Rodriguez's, uh, questions, and then an answer. So we can definitely point that out and print that out, and see if that helps a little bit, um, with, in terms of, it's a flow chart that tells you kind of the process, if that would be helpful.
I think it's helpful, because we, every time we have this conversation, even though sometimes it's redundant, and sorry, some of us have ADHD, it's, I feel like progress is being made, and so it's helpful to be able to articulate that to our constituents.
We'll, we'll get that printed out for you. Sorry, ma'am.
Believe me, we don't like to disconnect people. We do everything we can. We send out the statements, the courtesy calls, we do the payment arrangements, we're offering the utility assistance. It's been really helpful now that we have a total of four agencies to help the citizens out there. So we are really trying to, you know, make sure that we have the payment. If we can't, if they can't pay it, we're offering those services and doing those extensions for them. Because it, it saves everybody work. It saves the staff in utility billing, and then also utilities, you know, from having to go do that. And then you have upset customers calling us, and then also, you know, with the technicians out in the field, or those CSRs in utilities.
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning that, because that's sort of why, where I was coming from, as far as what do we need to do to better help y'all? Uh, because I imagine if we get the complaints, y'all sure as heck get the complaints.
Yes.
So if there's ways to either avoid that completely, or at least alleviate some of it, I'm very much interested, and so thank you for the additional context and, and that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I think we've covered everything on this slide. The only thing that we haven't, just to point out, is that since the QAB has not made a formal recommendation, there's no financial information included for water, wastewater, or electric in this presentation. So we'll begin with the stormwater fund. And the stormwater budget for fiscal year twenty-five proposed to, actually, the revenues and expenses were balanced. And looking at where we're estimating to finish, it looks like we're gonna bring in a little more revenue than expense. So we'll add a little to fund balance. We'll finish with about a three-point-one million dollar fund balance. In fiscal year twenty-six, the proposed budget is similar, where revenues and expenses will match, and so we'll finish with that same fund balance. The fund balance requirement in stormwater is ninety days cash on hand, so that's two and a half million dollars. So we are above that with the three-point-one million dollar fund balance. The stormwater revenues are mostly from the stormwater fees. There's no rate adjustment included in the increase in revenue. That is all just from a growth in the account, number of accounts. And as mentioned previously, there's no late penalties within the revenue budget. The major cost drivers in the stormwater fund, personnel, there's a, the three percent increase will cost stormwater fund fifty-seven thousand dollars. The, there's the new position where the general fund was gonna cover two-thirds of it, and the stormwater was gonna cover the other third. So this is that other third, is thirty-three thousand dollars. It's the public works administrative senior position.
Would that be their salary?
That's just a third of the salary, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm making sure.
And that's salary plus benefits?
Yes, ma'am, yes. So the other, um, cost drivers and, and oper, on the operating side, there's an increase in the debt service in fiscal year twenty-six from the fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement plan. That debt service amount is two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Moving forward, for the annual CIP, anything up to five million dollars, the stormwater fund will cover. And anything in excess of five million dollars, the general fund would cover. That being said, you know, where, where the general fund is having issues as well, there's, um, there's a, a lower cap on the general fund, so Mr. Condor is having to work all the general fund projects and whatever can fit in stormwater in excess of that five million together for that. And just as a, a point, a note, this is another fund that would have been impacted for mowing services. That is actually spring of two thousand twenty-six and not July. This is what's not included in the fiscal year twenty-six budget, and the stormwater fund is one personnel request in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And the resource recovery fund, for fiscal year twenty-five, we're estimating to bring in more revenue than what was budgeted. And expenses are estimated to come in slightly above what the adopted budget was. So we're estimating to add to the overall fund balance. We began with a three-point-one, and we'll end with three-point-seven. The proposed fiscal year twenty-six, the total revenues is eight-point-seven, and expenses are eight-point-three. So we would continue to add to the fund balance, which we are trying to accumulate for the resource recovery site, or new resource recovery center. We'll finish with a hundred and eighty-one days cash on hand, and the fund balance requires ninety days. So we, we do have about two million dollars in excess of the policy buildup right now. The revenue breakout in resource recovery, sixty-seven percent is solid waste. And then the other, about thirty-one percent is recycling, and the remainder comes from interest income, as well as the Hays County contribution for the household hazardous waste program. This is another fund where late penalties have also been removed. In the revenues, there's an increase in the revenue from a one percent rate increase, as well as a growth in customer accounts. On the expense side, that, the three percent increase for personnel costs thirty-two thousand dollars. And for, on the operating side, solid waste contract increased by two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, and that increase is just by the estimated growth in customers. And the recycling contract increased by fifty-nine thousand dollars. That is increased by the contractual three percent, as well as growth from customers. Yes.
Sorry. Um, so the, I understand the, the increase in, in customers, but let's say, you know, because I know we've seen this already, where we're not building homes at the same rate. Is the contract at three percent a fixed rate, or does it account for the amount of homes that would be added on to their services? It's fixed? Okay, thank you.
Greg Card, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement, I do want to say, um, our TDS has been a great partner. They have that three percent, too. They for, because we just renewed their contract for five more years, they were, uh, didn't charge us the three percent this year. So we saved a lot.
Okay, so we have two funds remaining. The first one is.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to do the decision point on this topic.
Okay.
While we're thinking about it. And so on page a hundred and two, or slide hundred, two, is the decision point that we're asked. We're only gonna do the first one. About approving a one percent rate increase in resource recovery, just to prevent a larger increase in future years. Can someone remind me, what is my, um, I'm a regular cart. What, what, what is on my bill? For resource recovery? I know it's more than five and less than a hundred, but in between there, I'm just not sure what the number is.
You, you have the, uh, green rice cart, your recycle cart.
Yep.
And then your garbage.
Right. What, do you know what that fee is on my bill?
No. Sorry.
Because I, I'm paying the, the total, and I'm not focusing in on that, okay. Just trying to figure out what the impact is to the customer. Fifty cents, five dollars, you know, whatever.
Yeah, it's real small. Like I say, we lucked out this year with keeping the TDS off, too.
Okay. Okay, so council, the question is, do we want to approve a one percent increase in the resource recovery?
Mayor, I just wanted to.
Yes, sir.
We have an answer to your question. It's thirty dollars and ninety-five cents.
I was thinking it was thirty-something. Thank you. Okay. Helpful, helpful.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
My question is, uh, is it possible to add something else to that contract? For an example, we're allowed to put outside brush or whatever in our homes every, three times a year, something like that, four times a year. Other contracts have it where individuals that live in, said, or whatever town they live in, they can take their, their garbage and trash to the site with no charge, as long as they can prove they live in that city. Is that possible to, to add that to our contract, or is it on our contract?
Why, I'm not sure. Why would you want to do that?
Well, several reasons, because sometimes they only want to take so many cubic, uh.
This is if somebody's got a lot of stuff?
Yeah, there's, there's, I have a lot of stuff.
More than the bulk pickup?
Yes, ma'am. And they want to be so specific on what's gonna be on that bulk.
Oh, I know.
Then it ends up on the side of the road.
Yeah, and I get the calls like, oh, I can't put all this on there, you know? Okay, that's where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I'll get you that answer. I'm, I'm, because I'll say it wrong, uh, but I'll get you that answer. And then one thing that we do have in our community that people love is our community cleanups, the four community cleanups, um, so.
But, but there's, there's incidents that things come up, and they have more than, than was required.
We'll get you that answer.
And where's the drop-off at for TDS? Where would that be?
It's in Creedmore.
Okay, so it's not like it would be at the animal shelter area.
Right.
But twice a year. Creedmore.
It's Creedmore.
Yeah, so.
But I want to be able to, our folks to be able to, to go to Creedmore and dump a trailer full of junk, whatever they might have.
Well, our contract's set for the next, what, four years or whatever it is, but there might be something that might be in there. Maybe other cities do it, and it's an hour.
And, and we can, they've been great to work with. I mean, the question just came up this last week, too, on getting an extra recycle cart. So, you know, it's, we mold ourselves to what we need. It's just, we don't know what's gonna come up until it comes up, so. I'll check into this to see if it's already allowed. I, I just don't know, sorry.
Yeah, I, I will second that, the issue on the bulky pickup. Besides having to tell them everything that's in the pile, they sometimes have a hard time finding it twice. It was right there. So the, the piles stayed there for weeks. It wasn't good. It was right there, right where I said it was.
Well, I've just been asked that question quite a bit, and I, I said.
No, it's a good question, and I'm sorry I don't know that, because they, I know they do take stuff, but I, they either charge a little bit, or that could be something we could change, if, bring it back and let you know.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, back to the question at hand, uh, which is approving the one percent rate so that we can slowly get where we need to be in the future. So all I need is a yes or no. I'm gonna go start at that end and go to this one. Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Scott had another obligation, had to leave. I'm a yes. Ms. Garza?
I guess.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, it all depends how they're gonna answer the question I asked. Uh, but I'm a yes.
All right. And Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay. Now let's go back to where you were. Thank you. We're at an airport.
All right, yes, the, the airport. For fiscal year twenty-five, we are estimating that the, um, revenues and expenses are coming in on target. That shows that they're coming in exactly on target, so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little speechless for that. I might have to look into that and follow up with, with where we actually think we're going to, uh, come in at, because that is, um, the exact amount on both revenues and expenses.
No.
Probably not. It might be the first time.
I want to check into that a little bit more.
It's a good goal.
Yeah, it would be great if it would. It'd make budgeting a lot easier.
But, but that means we're in the plus column, which is a big deal, too.
Yeah. So on the, if that happens, then we'll finish with fifty-seven thousand dollars of a fund balance for next year. We are estimating that revenues are going to increase, though, as you can see, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. The expenses will be eight-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. So we'll, estimating that we would add some money to fund balance, finishing with a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of fund balance. So the major revenue sources within the airport fund are the commercial land or facilities rent, and those are estimated to increase by sixty-four thousand dollars. On the operating side, the airport operational contract has an annual two percent increase in it, and that increase is twelve thousand dollars. The overall contract with the airport decreased by ninety thousand dollars, and that's because we, we had some COVID funding that we were using. It was ninety thousand dollars a year to fund an, an employee that was at the airport. That funding, like all the other COVID fundings, going away, so the city is no longer contributing towards that cost. And there is also an indirect, increase to the indirect cost of forty-five thousand dollars. I think this may have even been asked on the message board. The reason that that is going up, the cost has always been there. The airport has just never generated enough revenue to have the whole cost in there, so we've always. revenue to have the whole cost in there, so we've always reduced, reduced it to keep it balanced. And now that they have enough revenue to add it, we've just added it on. So, that takes us to the transit fund.
And there's no decision points on airports, so we can continue on.
There was not. And the transit fund, we're estimating to finish fiscal year twenty-five at two-point-seven million in revenues and two-point-eight million in expenses. So we are estimating that we're going to use some fund balance. We'll finish at five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. For fiscal year twenty-six, the proposed revenue budget is four-point-seven million, and the expenses is four-point-eight million. There are some one-time expenses in fiscal year twenty-six, there's one-point-eight million dollars of grants that we're receiving for buses, and so the, it, revenues and expenses are increased by one-point-eight million dollars. Um, there's, there's also the triennial, triennial review preparation. Um, it's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and it's designed to prepare the city for the Federal Transit Administration audit, and so that will also be funded during fiscal year twenty-six. So the ending fund balance, um, in transit will be four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, which is just shy of what the target is. The sixty-day target is five-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. The, uh, major revenues in the transit fund, we just mentioned, I just mentioned the grant for the seven transit, transit vehicles of one-point-eight million dollars. The three percent increase in transit, it, the cost is twelve thousand dollars. On the expense side, obviously, the one-point-eight million dollars for those seven transit vehicles, and the triennial review preparation is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. An important note, we, we discussed it earlier with the general fund when we were talking about some of the increased costs in fiscal year twenty-seven, so the general fund's contribution has been lower due to the cares in our funding, and that will end in, with fiscal year twenty-six. Beginning in fiscal year twenty-seven, the general fund's contribution will go up by approximately three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. This is a list of what's not included in the budget for resource recovery in the airport. There is a budget supplemental request for three personnel and resource recovery for a hundred-and-forty thousand, and there were five capital requests at the airport that totaled a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. So, uh, that is the end of the fund reviews, and now we would, uh, move to the utility billing late penalty recommendations. Before we move to that, I did just want to follow up on another question that counsel asked. The average salary for civil service is ninety-five thousand, and for non-civil service is seventy-five thousand. So those are the average salaries.
All right.
Hmm. Thank you for that.
So with the, uh, utility late penalty, we, we did a peer review. We surveyed, this slide, um, was sent out, and, and the message board, we did update it. It should read thirteen cities were surveyed, and that nine cities have a late penalty of ten percent, which is the same as City of San Marcos. Three cities have a late penalty of five percent, and one city has a twenty-dollar initial late penalty plus a one percent interest.
Um, is there any way we can pull up that wonderful chart y'all put in the message board in response to my question about this particular survey? I don't know if that's... Sorry Hayden. Maybe I can buy some time.
Uh, did they email that to us, or did they put it in the message board?
They put it in the message board.
Oh, but you want it on the Jumbotron?
Yeah, just so people can see it.
No, good.
I guess while we're waiting, uh, this might be a question for Savas, about the transportation, the buses. Um, are we still going to have the capability to implement that wonderful, uh, tracking system that y'all came up with on the new buses?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, cool.
I thought it was going to be ones like that.
Okay. You wanted to talk about a department? Anyway, we're doing so good. It's just an innovative solution, and it's cost-effective, so I appreciate it.
Hmm.
Perfect, yes. Thank you. And so, I guess the purpose of why I asked this question, so, for the cities that are, that have that five percent late penalty, correct me if I'm wrong, but all of those are municipally-owned, um, services?
Yes, um, I, yes, according to the chart, um, Austin, Bryan, and Garland have electric, water, wastewater, garbage, and drainage, the same as the City of San Marcos.
Okay.
And College Station, Georgetown, New Braunfels, well, theirs is NBU, then us, and then Seguin.
Yeah.
Sugar Land is a little different. But regardless, yeah, the late penalties run from five to ten percent, but I, something I don't want to lose sight of is we've got the late fee, but there's also the, does reconnect fee, forty bucks, on top of this?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just something to not forget.
And that's forty during business hours, and then it jumps up to-
One-seventy.
One-seventy, right after hours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had two hours on that too.
Oh, okay.
And, and they-
I'll make it two hours.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
But if we have a bill of four hundred dollars, we're looking at additional late fees of forty dollars. Or reconnection late fees, I guess. Is that right?
I, I, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Like, if you have a bill that's four hundred dollars on your electric, uh, ten percent of that will be, what, forty dollars?
Yes, sir.
Plus the reconnection fee.
Yes, if, if it was disconnected.
And, somebody remind me, when we talked about that, and the one-seventy, and it was supposed to be, uh, cost recovery for somebody on call to have to go do that, but then we, nobody could find where that actual one-seventy came from, and somebody was going to work on that, and did we ever find that? And yeah, I'm giving Mr. Horth, I, I'm talking, giving him some time to get to the microphone, because I know he's going to help us out on this.
Tyler Horth, Director of the Utilities, uh, in our COAB meeting, uh, in May, we presented to them, uh, for review, something we committed to you guys last fall, that we would go through all what is tagged, the other fees, and those are in the other fees. So, since then, we went through and did a true cost analysis of all of those steps that we have to do. COAB has those under review, we're at our next meeting, they'll, uh, give us their feedback on that, so we can formalize that in the recommendation that we'll be bringing to you.
Okay.
So that, that's, that work is all underway.
In progress. All right, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up.
Very, very helpful. Okay. So...
Is it, um, is it okay to continue the presentation?
Were we at the decision points for electric?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
Um, we're going to get there about- I have a question on the chart, so, these cities that were chosen were the same category that we usually choose, like the peer cities. I think in the future, it would be helpful for me to also be able to contemplate, like, the socioeconomic status of the community, right? So like, I understand, like, the five, a five percent penalty in Austin is different for us, because like, we have very different socioeconomic status, right? So it's like comparing apples to oranges, right? Like, does that make sense?
Who does compare to us?
Bryan, I think, is the closest one. Um, but I don't know. I mean, I think it's just helpful to, like, contemplate that as well.
To truly compare apples and apples.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know, and this is the difficult thing. This is the struggle that we go through, is that even if you find socioeconomic cities that are comparable, they may not always compare in terms of the complexities of their operations. And so, I think that's the, the aspect of why it's such a challenge to find, um, true peer cities, you know? I, I understand that. I, I just think that when we talk about methodology for any comparison, right? Like, I'm thinking back to my intro to statistics in grad school classes, like, there's never, like, it's rare to have perfect comparisons against populations, like, it's just very rare. But there, there, it's important to name the limitations of the data in front of you, right? So like, I think it makes sense that the methodology here is that you want us to compare, um, comparable governments that, like, all the responsibilities that we have, right? But I think that it, a limitation to this is that we, like, the median household income varies a lot in these, and this chart, so I'm not, I'm not asking you to go find another methodology, I just think that if we're going to present something, like, present it as, um- Gotcha. Holistically as possible, or, like, let's name that, um, uh, limitation while we're con, does that make sense? Like, that's really all I'm asking. Yeah, no, that, that, that clarifies. Thank you.
Are you saying that you want to make this part of the criteria?
No, I'm just saying, like, when we're sitting here and we're like, oh, I think we're, I think five percent is good, because a lot of people have five percent, it's like, you're basing that compared to entities where the median household income is a lot higher.
Right.
So it's like, use, if this is the data we're being provided, because this is like, I guess, the closest com, like, uh, comparable entities based on that second column, that's fine, but I, I do think we should sit with the fact that the population, the experience of the actual people living there is very different.
Yeah, I, I like that idea, I wish it was part of this, uh, criteria.
Right, so just like, a quick thing, it's like, Austin's median household income is like ninety-one thousand, Bryan is like an estimate of like fifty-three thousand, Garland seventy-four, Buda, I don't know if that's right, but if they are, Buda's real rich. Um, like a hundred-eleven thousand, like, it's different.
Right.
Um... So at least just put what that is in the chart, so we can keep that into consideration?
Right, yeah, because like, we have, what, ten percent, right?
Yes.
Is that, and, and we have a fifty-one thousand-ish, like, median household income, and that's just crazy to me that our late penalty is higher than, like, Austin, when their median household income is almost double.
I totally agree.
Like, that's-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I have a comment that I'm already regretting making, but-
[laughing]
To that point, wouldn't, so all of these percentages are a percentage of their bill, so wouldn't knowing what these municipalities' utility rates are actually be better? Like, a better comparison than what their-
I'd begin to know that too, yeah.
Because-
Ten percent of what, yeah?
Yeah, it's good, because what their house, what the median household income, like, I get where you're coming from, but how much a resident in those cities makes isn't necessarily comparable to this, yeah.
But, but it's, uh, what's your average bill?
Because I mean, we have a rich city that has low utility rates, or a poor city that has high utility rates, and so these percentages, if they're based on what the utility bill is, I think knowing all these municipalities' utility rates would actually be a better comparison.
But is it of my whole bill? Or is it of the electric and the water? Is it of the stormwater fee? Is it the resource recovery fee?
It's the whole bill.
Yeah, because it's, it's a percentage of what is late, right?
Yes, sir, yeah.
But those other slides said that we weren't considering late, regret, late fees anymore.
That was at counsel's direction.
So why would we be charging it?
We still have a late fee in place, it's just that counsel directed us to not include it in budgeting revenue, so that we're not reliant on bringing in a certain amount of revenues from late fees.
Right, but if I'm, I'm late, how do, I mean, you're not getting that, whatever, buck and a half on the community enhancement fee, but it's not like I'm not getting, you see what I mean? I mean, clearly, electric is, is mine, you know, the, the water, if I had city water, would be, but, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't get why it's, I get that the whole bill's not been paid, I don't know. Just seems odd.
I mean, I would like both, uh, what Ms. Garza requested and Mr. Gonzalez, like, both of those, I think, could help a more, help me make a more comprehensive decision.
And the average bill.
Yeah, because I do think how much people make is-
The dollar amount that the ten percent or five percent is being-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just feel uncomfortable with, uh, charging the whole bill, the, the ten percent.
But this is what COAB is looking at right now, correct?
COAB is not looking at late penalties.
They're not looking at late fees?
No, ma'am, they're, they are looking at the reconnect fees, they're not the late penalties, though.
Because when we were talking about wastewater earlier, or water runoff, we said there's no late fees. But indirectly, you're still going to get them from this side. That means there is late fees.
Yes, sir, like, if there, if there is a stormwater fee that is, i- if, if that's part of the balance, then, and ten percent is applied to that as well. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and that includes trash and everything else as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, electricity gets disconnected first.
Yes.
And then it takes two days, and if it's still not paid, then water gets disconnected. And we went back before that there is a possibility that they, they'd go out twice, and I don't remember how that would happen. Because if, you notice when the electric is off and you pay your bill, and then the water comes back on and it's not going to, you're not going to have two reconnect fees on the same late bill.
You will have two, yeah, if both get disconnected-
I mean, at different times.
I'm sorry?
At different times, there shouldn't be. For the wa, one for the water and one for the electric.
If both get disconnected, my understanding is both those charts, yes, ma'am. If both are disconnected.
Even if they have to, only have to go out once? Yeah, I know, I know we're going to need Mr. Horth back.
We're working on that. All those considerations are being contemplated by COAB right now, those are in their other fees, and we already have that methodology in front of them, we'll bring back that recommendation to you, formally with the budget recommendations and rate increase recommendations. But I can, I'll go ahead and share, that answer is, we, that specific question was asked in COAB, and we are, we've configured that to say you only have to pay, that, well, you don't have to pay both late fees if you're going out and, and just doing the one dis, reconnect, right? So, we've already got that covered, I don't have the numbers in my head, but it's, it's already in that line item, COAB has that, they're acting on it.
But they're not looking at the, what the late, the rate of the late, or the penalty?
No, 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 y'all directed finance to work on late fees, we presented that to you a number of times, we just took other fees is what we have COAB working on now.
Could we, could we have COAB look at the late fees?
It's just not what we were charged with last fall, right? We separated that out, because like the mayor said, we've had a number of these meetings hours at a time, finance picked up that piece, because it's more of you, utility billing interest than it is ours, and we just said, well, if y'all are taking that, we'll take all the other fees, so that's just historically how we got to where we are. We'll be happy to absorb that into our conversation too, but late fees is a philosophical thing, right?
Right, yeah. That's what Joe and I were just-
Yeah, the others had to do with cost of service and stuff, I get it.
That's not a cost of service conversation.
Right.
That's a philosophical, is it, you, how punitive do you want to be to convince people to pay their bills versus how, you know, sympathetic do you want to be to people, and that's, that's just a philosophical, you guys decide, so we didn't include that in our cost of service study.
Right, but part of this was the, what the disconnect fee would be.
Which is what COAB is working on now.
Right, so when we sit, maybe we need to wait until we see that, because if, if the disconnect fee is ten dollars versus forty, I may feel differently about what the penalty is. So I'm, I'm good with holding off this discussion until they get, which is expected.
You said they already have, they're, they've already had that conversation?
Yeah, we, we, in, in May, we presented COAB with, um, the utilities financial policy basics, the, um, other fees table, and the community benefits chart, which was the three things that we said we'd work on, uh, since last budget cycle. Uh, we've also, on Monday night, we presented them with a deep dive into how cost of service studies are performed, and the initial, uh, results of that. studies are performed and the initial results of that. So, those things and our overall budget and rate structure is all things that we'll be taking back to COAB for, for their formal recommendation to you guys in July, like we normally do.
Okay, so...
And if you want us to hold this off and package that up into that, we'd be more than happy to do that.
I don't mind doing this one, but I'd like to see what the reconnect fee is going to be.
Yeah, I'm curious to hearing, like, about that conversation and their methodology, because, well, I hear you about the philosophical approach, yes, but there's also empirical research that shows what behaviors and systems result in statistically significant, like, changes in behavior. So, I'm just, like, pushing back on that a little bit. But yeah, I think, to your point, figuring out that other piece of the puzzle, seeing what the committee of people came up with.
To look at what somebody's total penalty is. And as I understand it, late fees are not considered part of the budget anymore, so really, what we do is not going to affect the budget, so we don't have a, a ticking deadline in front of us that's tied to when we have to make budget decisions.
That's correct.
Okay. So, are we comfortable with having this as an agenda's discussion when COAB comes back with their recommendations?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I would say thank you to my colleagues who appreciate the COAB board making this decision and going through that hard work. It's, it's not something very easy that they're going through right now. It was a deep discussion that they had on Monday, and they are taking this very seriously.
Right, and they're doing what they can with the information and skills that they have, and I think that their perspective is super valuable.
And I, I do appreciate you guys honoring their suggestions and just listening to them. Thank you.
So, you're, you're, you're down for, yes, let's wait, and Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez said, yes, I'm going to check with y'all down here, everybody's ready, real, okay. So, that conversation will be at a later date, when y'all let us know when COAB is ready.
Okay.
And then we'll put our five cents in on the other part, so we will not be doing that decision point this evening, okay?
All right, that will allow us to move to slide 103. Which is next steps. And unless there were other considerations on, you know, for the other enterprise funds, if something that council wanted to, any guidance that council wanted to provide on the resource recovery, or the transit fund, as a other consideration.
I don't have a decision point on transit, tell me what that is.
There, there isn't. It's just the other consideration was on that slide, so if there was another consideration, council had for this.
Anything else on transit, anyone?
No.
Okay.
Um, then, then we can go home. Almost. Well, I just, you're sorry, I'm not trying to hold us up, I'm so sorry. It's just I know that the Phase 2 budget simulation, people had mentioned transit, or my trip, was it one of the top things that they mentioned? Maybe not. Okay, never mind, it's not. Oh, yes, in the meetings and dream sessions, mobility and connectivity, transit. Um, uh, no, if I think of anything, I mean, obviously, I'm interested in bus stops, more, more places for people to sit, but...
Or shelters.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a question for now. It's just, I drive past so many bus stops, and people are sitting on the concrete sidewalk.
Isn't he?
Yeah, I saw it today in front of, like, Wells Fargo, a person was sitting there, and it was 95 degrees outside, I can't imagine what it's like on the concrete, so I don't know how we can address something like that, but I understand it's not an easy feat.
I would think that, that would probably be general funds that, that would pay for that, is that right? Pete?
Because I know we're encouraging people to use the buses more, especially now, we're going to be working with newer buses, and the hope is people want to ride them, but I would probably hate to sit on the concrete waiting for one.
Pete Pindian, Assistant Director of Public Works, we're actually working on that now. We're going to have a new seating option coming, which is two seats that attach to the bus stop pole.
Oh, okay.
So, we're, we're looking at some different solutions, where we don't want to install a full shelter, where we don't have space.
And an umbrella?
Yeah, I was going to ask about shade, shade protection.
I would have to talk to our transit manager about the shade component to those seating options.
Okay. At least in, like, the, I know some areas I've seen, we have, like, trees providing a natural shade, but for those that, that don't have, you know, any shade.
We're also actively looking at locations for shelters, we have some in stock.
Okay, great, great to hear, thank you.
Sure.
On to next steps.
Next steps. So, as, as we opened up with the calendar, the budget will be submitted to city council, and the maximum proposed tax rate will be set on August 19th. The additional opportunities for community input are the Neighborhood Commission presentations, which will be the day after we present the budget to council on the 20th. There'll be two public hearings on the budget, two public hearings on the tax rate, and any proposed fee increases, there will also be a public hearing on those. And you can see the dates, September 2nd and the 16th. Council considers the budget and the tax rate adoption on September 16th.
Is that the one that takes five, Mr. Gary, budget? Five votes?
If, if we're going to exceed, yeah, it just depends.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, council, any questions about the calendar?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Locke, and all of your team, and just everybody who put time into this. Thank you.
Thanks to all the directors and their staff, because I know this is tough, and, and probably lots of, lots of disappointments, as for us, too. Any more questions? And the next thing on our agenda is question and answer. No one signed up, anybody here?
Ma'am, could I just say thank you to council, too? I want to say thank y'all, to, to y'all for great productive discussion, and lots of, lots of good questions, lots of good dialogue, lots of great support, so definitely appreciate y'all, thank you.
Okay, there not being anyone with a question and answer session with press and public-related items on this agenda, our next item is adjournment, there being nothing further on our agenda to talk about, I'm going to clock us out at 9:50.